I will call to order the March 21st, 2011 regular meeting of the Board of Cabarrus County Commissioners. At this time, I'd ask for everybody to stand for the presentation of colors by the Concord High School Fire Academy Honor Guard.
Honor Guard, full hood, hut! Present, hut! Prepare to post? Post. You will please join me with the pledge allegiance to the flag of our nation. Hands salute. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag- ...of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Two.
This time, I call on Pastor Robert Durejevich for the indication.
Heavenly Father, as the Apostle Paul wrote to Timothy in First Timothy 2, "Therefore I exalt, exhort first of all that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and reverence; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior." And Father, we pray, Lord, for this Board of Commissioners and ask, Lord, that as they serve, Lord, that is with a heart, Lord, that is pleasing unto you. We pray, Lord, that when they are in doubt, that you will give them faith; that, Lord, when they are facing confusion, that you will give them clarity; Lord, that when they are facing complacency, that you will give them simplicity; and when they have reached their limits, that you will give them your divine wisdom, Lord, in their personal lives and in their areas of service to the public. Father, we pray for those who are in uniform, both our local, our state, our National Guard, and for those on foreign fields that are defending our freedoms of being able to assemble here freely this evening. We pray especially for the families of those who have fallen and paid the ultimate sacrifice, that you bring comfort into their hearts, into their lives. And just pray, Lord, that you will continue to exalt us, Lord, with your blessing, with your favor, in every way we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Honor Guard, please post.
This time, I'd ask for the young folks to come up, introduce yourself, and after you finish introducing yourself, if you'll go over to my right, your left, to Commissioner Poole, Vice Chair Poole, she has a pen for you.
I'm Carl Franklin with Concord High School Fire Academy. I've been on the Honor Guard for a year and a half. I am a captain in Third Battalion.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Brendan Blackwelder. I'm with the Concord High School Fire Academy. I've been on Honor Guard for a year, and I am a captain in Second Battalion.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Austin Morley. I'm with the Concord High School Fire Academy. I've been on a guard for a year and a half, and I'm a lieutenant in my battalion.
Thank you. You gotta go the other way.
My name is Amber Klont, and I'm a captain and a lieutenant.
How long have you been on?
For a year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Amber's actually our youngest member with the Honor Guard and with the Drill Team itself. There's not really a Drill Team, it's more of an Honor Guard. Amber is actually the Honor Guard captain. She has a booming voice when she's not quite nervous like she is tonight. But she does very well with that, and I'm gonna get her to call the commands before too many more tries out here in public. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the invitation. My name's Chief David Barlow with the Concord High School Fire Academy, and I'm privileged to have come out of retirement to start this program or work with this program. There's only three in the state of North Carolina, and it's rapidly growing, and we have been selected as the model program for the state by the Office of the State Fire Marshal. But thank you very much for allowing us to come tonight and share with you.
Chief Barlow, before you step aside, can you talk a little bit about the Fire Academy at Concord? What that means, how many kids are out there, and what they're trying to accomplish?
We actually started in the fall of 2010. Actually, there was an exploratory class prior to that, but in the fall of 2010, they were looking for an instructor. The requirement was that there would be an instructor who is a certified teacher and also a Level 2 instructor with the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Concord Fire and Life Safety Chief Tig is here tonight. Just wanted to say thank you very much to our partner agency for their assistance. They actually instructed the classes at Concord High School for an entire semester without hiring a teacher. Without them, it would not be possible for us to do the program, and they have been just absolutely wonderful. We've been blessed by gifts of equipment. We've been able to lease a fire apparatus from the city of Concord. That has been a wonderful training tool, and anything we need, they're more than happy to provide it, and they've done just a superb job with that. And just, our program has grown from 20 students and 20 books in the fall of 2010 to approximately 120 students, approximately $150,000 worth of inventory, and the fire truck, which is on loan right now. So it's really growing well, and I think it's a testament to the kids' interest. They've really, really done a wonderful job with it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
We now have the agenda that's, or actually approval of the minutes on page five of our agenda. We have a motion to approve the minutes as presented on January the 28th, 29th, and February the 7th of this year.
So moved, Chairman.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda that's before us, there is some, actually, it says changes, but I think it's just some additional information for G8, the banking services contract, G9, the qualified school construction bonds, which is the data, as well as in addition to the application of Mr. Fulton for the Council for Sustainable Local Economy. Is there any changes to the agenda as it's been presented? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next matter that we have is E1, it's the Old Bethel School property update on bid opening. Oh, excuse me. Almost missed it. We have some comments, informal public comments. We have three cards. If the first person would come up and introduce yourself and let us know what you want to talk about for three minutes. First is Mr. Richard Mooney. Mr. Mooney?
Good evening. Richard Mooney, Deputy Chief of Jackson Park Fire Department. Just wanted to come tonight to let y'all know that we are aware of the situation. We found out through the Fire Marshal's Office, and as I've been emailing some of y'all, it was not as long ago as y'all think. The chief is unable to be here. Just wanted to let you know that our people have trained hard and they work hard. There's 57 years of history in that department. You're asking us in three months to close the doors. I've been a fireman in this county for 27 years. The other three departments that went out of business in this county had ample amount of notice to close their doors. It was more than three months. All we're asking, we know we're gonna close, we know it's inevitable. We're just asking for a little more time. We're working on things to try to merge with somebody. There's nothing set in concrete right now, but we're working on it. We just cannot rush it and accomplish it in three months. $30,000 is the best we can figure that you're gonna save by closing our doors, 'cause somebody's gonna get the fire tax money, there's no way around it, that's the law. The sales tax will go to whoever gets the fire district, which from what we hear through the grapevine, is the city of Concord. They're a great organization. We offer 24-hour coverage, too. We have a paid person there during the day from 9 to 6. We usually have two or so hanging around. After that, our volunteers come out in force. We've ran over 300 or so calls, we have never missed a call, never. You also look at the training we put in versus what you'll get, we do the same thing. Our guys are just as certified as some of the city of Concord. Yes, they're more, but they're paid to get more. Our people volunteer, they are not compensated. So all we ask is a little more time. If one more year, if $30,000 is gonna break this county, I'm sorry. But that's all you'll be saving if you close our doors. And we just asked for another year, and that gives us more time, and we know it's coming. But we heard this, in November, we were told by the Fire Marshal's Office, as long as we could pay our bills, nobody would bother us. Then we find out in February that, well, you're done. So there's conflicting stories. I don't know what you've been told, I know what we've been told, I know what I was present at at meetings. Like I said, all we're asking for is a little more time so we can go out with a little more dignity. If that's too much to ask for 57 years and being the third oldest department in this county, then I don't know what else to do. But that's all we're asking for. We know it's coming, we're not fighting it. All we ask is to delay it, to give us time to go out a little better. Because we got people we're trying to look out for, the communities unaware of what's going on. We just wanna let them know, not that they're gonna fight it, and not that we will, we just want some time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next matter we have, or next person to speak is Mr. George Stacy.
Thank you for letting me come tonight. My purpose here is to support Mr. Stephen Wright, who is interested in obtaining his property or leasing it or whatever program is on the agenda for him to get the property. I understand that he's going to develop the property for young people, old people, anybody that needs help from the community, he's going to do that. My purpose is to assure the county that he's gonna be properly insured. I'm the owner of S&amp;D Insurance Agency up the street, and he came to me to get advice on how to insure the property and to ensure that the people who come there would be covered if they were injured on the property. And I'm convinced that these people are serious in their attempts to obtain this property, and I have no idea what kind of arrangements you all are making with these people. But I know that these are serious people, and they wanna help the community. And it's my responsibility to him and the county to make sure that the people who go there are insured properly. And that's all I had to say about it. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thanks, sir. Next person to speak is Mr. Price Crutchfield.
I almost didn't make it, I almost went to jail today. Yeah, I was calling the police child molesters again. I'm of the opinion that the Concord Police Department's got a bunch of child molesters working there. And I say this because the Concord Police Department, for the past several years, have been trying to keep the lid on something that happened over at J. Robinson School, where a Concord Police Officer was arrested and charged with a felony sex crime against a student over there indecent liberties with a minor. Now, the officer was only under a $3,000 bond, but charged with a felony sex crime, I find that strange. And then three years goes by and he's allowed to make a plea bargain and not have to register as a sex offender. But I had a conversation with the Chief of Police, there was a member of the school board there, and at the city manager's office, at the meeting, the Chief of Police, Merle Hamilton, gave his version of what this officer did. He stated that the officer put his hand up this student's dress. That was his words in the presence of witnesses. And that's all he said, I don't know what else transpired, but that's what he said. So I'm gonna have to go ahead and conclude from that that the Concord Police are keeping the lid on people who work with the police department, who can molest people's kids at our schools and get away with it. I think we've got a bunch of child molesters working over at the Concord Police Department. Remember, this is the same police department that allows the police to drink liquor on school property and doesn't do one thing about it. I've got clear examples of the police lying under oath in court, clear examples. Scott Newell with the Concord Police Department, been with them a long time, got in court and under oath told Judge Hamby that I came into restaurants and harassed his family. I don't know of any restaurants I can't go into anywhere for any reason. Scott Newell's a liar. I believe that the Concord Police Department has a bunch of child molesters working for them. And if I was a child molester, if I was a child molester, all I'd have to do is just go to the Concord Police Department, and I'm sure they would gladly accept me. But I just don't have the qualifications. I'm just an old struggling sign painter. The Chief of Police bragged to me several times about how much money he made. I make a comfortable salary, I make a good salary. I'm just an old stupid painter, and I wouldn't be able to make it over there. I'm not part of that home cooking deal over there. I believe that the members of the Concord Police Department are molesting people's kids and getting away with it. I think they're a bunch of child molesters. I think the members of the Concord Police Department are child molesters. Oh, incidentally, they've been beating up our disabled veterans and getting away with that, too. I talked to a disabled veteran over at a body shop, and, thank you.
Next matter we have is old business. It's under E1, page 23 of our agenda. It's the Old Bethel School property update on bid opening and request to award or reject the bid. Call on Mr. Cook to at least get us to presentation of this information right now.
The Old Bethel School property on Highway 2427 was advertised for bids earlier this year, and in the notice, it required that sealed bids be submitted to the county manager on or before February 28th, 2011. On February 28th, those bids were opened, and the bid from Mr. Wright that you have the information on in your agenda package was the only bid that was received. I think when we were at the work session, there were some questions of Mr. Wright that were asked of him for him to produce some additional information by tonight's meeting. Aside from that, it would appear at this point that under the statutes and procedure that was set up for the auctioning of this property, that you would either accept his bid tonight or accept it with certain conditions, which you may see fit to impose, or reject it. Those would appear to be the options.
Okay, thank you. There was some questions for Mr. Wright. Mr. Wright, would you step forward and fill us in on a little bit more of your plans? And I believe that was more the idea of what you were going to, what your thoughts were and how quickly you were gonna be able to go forward.
I wanna thank everybody for letting me be here today, and those that came out to support me. And I also wanna thank God for getting me this far. I do have a passion to help people in the town of Midland and the surrounding counties. And I wrote an address letter that I wanna read out to the Board of Commissioners. Hi, my name is Stephen Wright, the founder of A New Beginning. I am a resident of Midland, North Carolina, and have lived there my entire life. I attended Old Bethel School, found the location of the outreach center. I'm not looking to gain fortune or fame, only a chance to make a difference in this growing society, where there is still poverty that affects our homes, kids still on drugs, teenagers droning gangs, homeless still homeless. Teenage pregnancy is still growing rapidly, no jobs for adults and young adults. I believe we can build a community of prosperity that will bring jobs to Cabarrus County, to bring crime rates down, teens and young adults off drugs, to provide assistance to families that's in need in a place where our senior citizens can enjoy. So let's work together to build a community of hope in a place where dreams can come true. The first phase that I actually wanted to really start is the property and host several different events. We have a, the first event would be, the first year of this year, we will host just events to raise money for next year. And that will be the starting startup for the Old Bethel School project, which is a project, which is the gymnasium. That is a phase, that is gonna be the Phase 1. And we are calling this project Project Hope, Saving Old Bethel School. And we do have in place, we're gonna have a bike rally with the Christian Association Club. We're gonna have a car show, which is gonna be following in the next July, the 22nd and 23rd. We're gonna be having a walk-a-thon. We're gonna be having a Mega Fest, and we're gonna be having a Christmas play. All through this year, we are intended to raise $58,000. And through sponsorship, for $25 a month, we're looking to raise $2,500, but yearly, we're looking to raise $30,000. And the total is $88,000 that we're gonna be able to raise in that next year to target Project Hope, Saving Old Bethel School. We're gonna start the gymnasium process. When we do that, we're gonna take the asbestos out of the gymnasium and start there first. And once we do that, we'll be able to start working and get labors that wants to serve in volunteer work, that's experienced in certain fields, to break down the labor cost and the cost of the original cost that was in here. So we think that we can, we definitely know that we can bring down the cost, at least about 70% of that cost can be dropped down through labor and volunteer work. The first project, the first phase is gonna be the gymnasium, which is, we're gonna start 2012. The ending date, we're gonna start at, hold on. 2012, the ending date's gonna be 2013, which we got a projected date of 10 years to start this project, well, to finish this project. And actually, we wanna try to finish it in seven, but we wanna try to get a little bit of leeway, a little bit of flexibility, because this is gonna be a big project. And we do want the whole town of Midland, and we do have sponsors and support from Walmart right here, and several others are sponsors. Jackie Barbie Insurance in Midland, I mean Locust, Pepsi-Cola, and Foodline. If y'all wanna see these, you can, they are signed signatures.
Yeah, why don't you pass them over here?
We have figured out the cost with just the gymnasium alone would be $237,000. But with our labor cost and deduction with experienced volunteers, the cost will be cut down to $118,000. And we definitely can control that through our fundraising and sponsors. And throughout this project, we're actually going to do the same thing throughout a year and a half, a year and a half, to target fundraising sponsors and things like that, grant money and things like that, to actually produce the revenue that we need to target each individual phase. And we're gonna break it down in two phases, which we're gonna target. Building B is the gymnasium, we're gonna target that first. We'll get asbestos out, the year and a half is gonna go towards that. And from that process, we're gonna target Building C, which is the corridor. And on the third phase, we're gonna be targeting the Building E, which is the garage, to where we're gonna store all of our material once we get started on this project. And once we do rehab that building, we're gonna turn it into a clothing assignment store to where we can generate revenue. Once we do get the gymnasium open, we'll be able to generate revenue for that. And then actually, our events will cover that, too. So our expense, I mean, our revenue is, actually could grow, you know, through sponsorship, once we get things open for the public. And all the records, all the fundraising is gonna be open to the public to see how this project is going. And what we're gonna put in Building B to start our program, we are going to remodel the bleachers with padding, stain, or paint. In the ceiling, we are going to add studio lighting and sound equipment for events. That's gonna generate revenue, once we do get the gymnasium finished. So that would occupy, that would take care of Building C, which is the corridor. And everyone would target each building, once we start doing the fundraising. And once we start renovating the building, it'll go toward the other building. And we also broke down the two-story building in two phases, which we're gonna target the first floor first for the first year of the 10-year plan. And then we're gonna go target the second floor. But we're gonna get the asbestos out of the whole entire building first, before we can go start working on that. But in Building C, inside Building C, the corridor, we are going to add an indoor swimming pool, spa, fitness room, arts and crafts game room, music classroom, and a lounge area. Now, this part here in the gymnasium is gonna be the recreational part. Now, the two-story part is gonna be all the learning facilities that we're gonna be putting in there. Teen counseling, marriage counseling, after-school programs, drug assessment classes, senior citizen programs. There's gonna be a kitchen area, coffee shop, bookstore inside the auditorium. There's gonna be a movie theater and drama class. There's gonna be in the two-story building, in the second story, public assistance program, Bible classes, teen pregnancy classes, anger management classes, feed the homeless program, housing shelter, programs, convention suits, and job assessment classes. In Building B, which is cafeteria, we're gonna utilize this cafeteria to feed the homeless, feed different events, and raise money. All these ideas and visions is gonna be going towards the community, to where we can help provide assistance to those that needs it. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Wright at this time? Commissioner Meesmer?
On Phase 1, you had mentioned that it would be $237,000, and then with the volunteer work, it would be reduced down to $100,000. And then with the volunteer work, it would be reduced down to $118,000. Do you have a, going through all the phases, do you have a grand total that this is going to cost? If there's just a roundabout figure, it's...
Yeah, we're going to, let's see. It's going to be two point... Let me see. $2,75,000 and $2,000 to renovate it. Because due to the steel and the material, they don't went up this year. So the cost hasn't come up since five years ago. When the estimated plans was calculated back then, we had another contractor come out and review the plan, so it don't went up since the material done went up. So...
This may be a question for the county staff, but is there a estimate on what it would cost to remove the asbestos?
At the work session, what was discussed is for us to remove the asbestos and tear it down. It's going to be about a million and a half dollars, I think.
Yeah, the asbestos, lead abatement, and then demolition and disposal of the materials was around a million, a little over a million.
Excuse me, but breaking that down, that was not broken down, that I remember off the work session. Any other questions? Anybody else have any... Commissioner Cruz?
I just, and I've not looked at the materials here yet. Mr. Wright, do y'all have actually a legal organization that has been incorporated that were the board of directors and...
Yes, sir. You may see those documents.
We probably, I imagine, need to see those eventually, but I don't need to see them right now. I mean, and then have you filed for 501(c)(3) status?
We are going to the pro bono. They are going to be sending us some letters back, probably within the week.
Okay.
For the 501(c)(3). And Lori counseling. They're going to assist that, too.
Commissioner Burge, did you have a question? Okay. You have not filed for the 501(c)(3).
Yes, sir, we have.
You have filed.
Yes, sir. It's going to take a process, because they are backed up right now with the pro bono, which they do organize outreach. And they said that it's going to take a couple of weeks for that to come back.
And this is a law firm that says it's going to take a couple of weeks?
Yeah, they do, they have several different outreaches that's going to them right now.
Or is it going to take a couple of weeks for them to prepare the applications?
Well, actually, prepare the application, yes.
Okay.
To send it back. But they said it wouldn't be no problem, because we're all legal, everything is already set in place for everything, to go ahead to do that.
Commissioner Meesmer?
I apologize, I'm unfamiliar with this organization, but is there any current operations that you guys are involved in? Is there anything that you, within the community?
Oh, yes. We actually do a Christmas giveaway. Last year, we did a Christmas giveaway. It was a really big turnout. There was a lot of families that was out of work. And the 60-year-old lady came to me, said, "Steve, it's a good thing that y'all doing this, because I have five grown men that they don't even have jobs." And they got like 10, she got 10 grandkids. And we was able to provide assistance for their family. And there's a guy that weighs 770 pounds, has been bedridden for 10 years. We're going through the Murdoch Foundation. We had a meeting with the guy, Jimmy Tyree. He's been in Midland, I'm sure everybody knows him. And we've been getting him some help through the Murdoch Foundation, which they are connected with Duke University. He said he wants to get that help. And his wife was telling me, she said, "Steve, he's just laying there dying."
Also, I wanted to ask about the asbestos removal. Is it strictly volunteers, or is it volunteer work from a company?
Well, we're going to actually pay for that. If we can get the volunteer work, that would be nice. If anybody's out there that's listening right now that can do that, offer that assistance...
As far as the asbestos removal?
But we do, when we do have the events and the sponsorship, it's going to be coming in for the revenue, we're going to be able to pay for that with the $88,000.
Okay. So it wouldn't be actual volunteers removing the asbestos?
No.
Yeah.
Could be.
I wanted to make sure. I figured there's some procedures that have to be followed.
Well, we're going to have, Mr. George is going to take care of all the insurance purposes and things like that. We're going to have the whole facility wrapped off, till we target one phase at a time, before there won't be no exposure for anybody. But we can host several different events there while we're raising money. We want to try to be cautious, too. We want to try to... What word I'm trying to say? We want to try to provide a safe environment. Anybody that wants to come out and be a part of our events. And then we want to try to help those that need help. There's a lot of people that needs help. I mean, we can't have enough organization like this to try to get kids off the streets. And it's growing rapidly.
Have you approached the Midland Town Council?
Yes, sir.
Regardless?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, what was the response?
Well, they like what we're doing, and they recommend that we keep pursuing it. And we have the whole town of Midland that signed a petition, over 500 signatures from last year. I went door to door. And everyone wants something to happen with the Old Bethel School, to provide assistance for the community, not just Bethel, I mean, not just Midland, but the surrounding counties.
Has anybody else showed any interest in this property the last couple of weeks?
Mr. Downs?
We have had some discussions with some other parties.
There's just been discussions, there's just nothing been, no discussion about monies that I know of that's kind of fruition.
Well, I'd say let's table it till he gets his 501(c), and then make a decision.
We have a motion to table this decision until Mr. Wright is able to get his 501(c)(3). Do we have a second to that motion? I'll make a, okay, we got a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I could make some comments. I think that this is a good move to do, because I really do feel like we've got to get everything, you know. If it was my personal place, I would probably have already jumped on it, because after all I've been through in the last six years of all the stuff we've done with this building and this property, and, you know, this is the most solid thing we've had come forth. And I mean, yeah, for this, but I wouldn't like to see those things done. And I'm glad we're going to do this versus just rejecting outright and open it back up for upset bid process, because, you know, like I say, we know what it's going to cost us to tear, raise the buildings and do the demolition. We know what it, we tried to sell it for, and it wouldn't sell for that. And we know also that the community has had some interest in doing something, and by the time we get to that, to the goal line, it gets, you know, get knocked back five yards. And I think, and this is the most solid proposal I think I've heard yet for this. But I would like to see, like I say, all the eyes dotted and t's crossed if we, and Mr. Wright has legal counsel, you know, have his legal counsel with our attorney to sit down and talk about what, you know, how it's going to be drawn up. Because I do want, I do understand, Mr. Cook, that we can't absolve ourselves completely of the asbestos and the lead issue. That fault, that stays with us, because we're in the chain of ownership on the property. Is that correct?
Well, it potentially can, because the county is in the chain of title for that property. So the county would still have some legal exposure for whatever cleanup may have to be undertaken, if it's not undertaken by whoever would be the purchaser. And so there would be the issue of whether the purchaser would be able to be financially capable or responsible to be able to take care of it, particularly given the amount it's going to cost to do it.
In regards to the 501(c)(3), it is my experience, it takes anywhere from six months to 10 months before something is sent back for completion. Have you, do you know, do you have any time reference that is different than that, or shorter? Or, I mean, it's hit or miss as to how quickly it gets done. And that's certainly something I don't do, but, you know, I've talked to some people about it, and it can go anywhere from six to 10 months, it can go quite a long time.
It, that really is a question better answered by the Internal Revenue Service, but it can take some time for them to investigate the application to determine if it in fact does qualify.
The reason why I bring that up is that just tabling it until you get a 501(c)(3) could, you know, I think that, yeah, I think that we ought to table it for a set time, just to see the status of where it is. And that can be at a work session, just, you know, we haven't heard anything, we've got, you know, we think it's going to be done. So I think it's more of, before it just gets tabled, and then we never hear about it again, until someone remembers, I think, to table it for four months out, just to get an update review about where we are.
Let's just table it for 30 days.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify my answer. We have talked to two different parties. One of those parties has withdrawn, they no longer are interested. The second party is just waiting on a decision. They do want to make an offer, but they know that the board can't consider the offer until this one is solved.
One thing to the, if I could ask Mr. Wright a question. If you considered actually even with the 501(c)(3), partnering with another 501, what's somebody that already is a 501(c)(3) organization to go in a partnership with you on this, to that way provide some of the legal cover, and especially from taking donations and things. Because I think a lot of people may be nervous of not being as a 501(c)(3) yet about providing contributions.
Well, I do like to go up under the umbrella of my pastor or whoever would like to come in and do that. That would be something that...
I'm just saying, that's maybe something to explore. That may be something to explore.
Yes, sir. That would further along the decision even quicker, before we can get started, if we go under umbrella of someone.
Commissioner Meesmer, do you have any other question, any other statement?
Sure. I really admire, you know, your ambitions, and I really certainly think Midland could use a facility of this. I think the Midland community would be very excited to have something like this. However, I have reservations with, you know, being such a low bid, and I understand the purpose of that. However, there not being a schedule of events, as one of the commissioners had requested at the previous meeting, a schedule of events, or however you want to put it, something attached with this, I would not feel comfortable approving something like this tonight. I understand there's a motion to table, but it's, I think there, this would be a decision that would take, take a while to get all the legal writings together, to make sure that, that there's no issues that would arise a year or two from now. And not, you know, not saying anything about you or your organization, or not offending that. However, just in a business decision, there has to be contracts and legal writings, and there's a proper channel that we would have to take. I would feel that we would have to take to just ensure that there's no issue that would arise a year or two now, in regards to the property just sitting empty, or in regards to we sell it, and then turn around two years later, it's sold for much more than what we sold the property for. I just think there's a lot of questions that we would have to have answered before any of that.
Commissioner Poole?
And I want to say, I mean, I think that you're as sincere as you can be. I have concerns about a $2 million-plus amount of money to raise doing fundraisers. And I've looked at the letters, they are, one of them says that there's no funding for this year, but you can ask us for next year. So the letters that you gave us don't have an actual commitment for funding.
Well, we do, oh, go ahead.
It's a lot of money that has to be raised, and that's my main concern. I'm concerned about the $10 bid. I'm very much aware of this property and how long it sat there. That was the reason for me to ask when something would happen. And we're looking at 2013, at the earliest, on the gym, or 212 to 213. And we're looking at 10 years out, some of those buildings still continually to deteriorate, and still continuing to be a real problem for that site. So my main concern is that, I think that your heart is in it, but I'm not certain that the money is going to come as quickly as you hope. And I think that's the concern that I have for this. I am interested to know if there's other offers on the table, and that would be a concern for tabling it for 30 days. If there's somebody out there that has the financial backing, it doesn't mean that that wouldn't be somebody that you could partner with, that would be able to own the building or renovate it or do something to it. I don't know what the plans are. But I do have concerns that, I think your heart is right where it needs to be. I'm just not certain that you have the financial backing behind you to actually make this happen. And if we're going to sell this property, then I would like to, I want to sell it to somebody that can get that $2 million-plus that it's going to take, and can get moving with it. This property's been sitting there for an extremely long time, and I don't think anybody can doubt the shape that it's in. I did talk to a Midland town councilman, and they don't have any funds, is what I was told. So though they would like for you or for anybody to do something to the property, preferably to save it, they don't have any funding to help with it either. And so I have some grave concerns on this particular project. And if we're going to table it, then that's the motion on the table. But I'm going to have to see a business plan written that details, I need something in my hand that details exactly what your plan is, and how, where you're going to get the backing from, and not just, I forgot what was on one of those basketball, softball games, and bike rallies, and car shows, to, you know, $88,000 is a lot of money, but compared to over $2 million, it's not a lot. So I think your heart's there, I'm just not convinced that the money's there to do this big project, because it is a big project.
We have a motion to table this for 30 days. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. That fails. We have a motion to accept or reject the bid for Mr. Wright at this time.
I'll make a motion to reject it.
We have a motion to reject the bid. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? I will tell you briefly, is, I echo what you've heard tonight, is you've got a very good plan, I just don't know where the money's going to come from. And, you know, it doesn't mean that you can't come back, but at this time, I cannot accept this bid and with this plan right now. So we have a motion to reject the bid. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries for one. Thank you. Next matter we have is the consent agenda. We have the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next matter is G1, is, that's on page 128. This is the Economic Development Grant for 390 Business Boulevard LLC, and public hearing. At this time, I call Mr. McDaniels for the presentation.
Sir, thank you. I'm here tonight to give an overview of this project and call for, ask for a public hearing. As you remember from the work session, this is the 4541 Enterprise Drive Spec Building. This building would be constructed in the International Business Park. It would be 88,000 square foot. It's spannable to 140,000 square foot. This building would be unique for us, in that we don't have a building of similar quality and similar size in the county. It would have 30-foot ceilings height, 30-foot ceiling heights, which adds some flexibility for manufacturing and distribution. The building itself has used local sources when possible, a local engineering firm, local architecture firm, as well as a local contractor would construct this facility. It also has its lead points in place, and will be able to pass that along to a possible tenant for some lead certification in the future. The building itself is included in the county's economic development grant program that was amended, I believe, in 2009, and allows the use of our economic grants for speculative buildings. The building itself, the estimated project cost is $6.2 million. That would generate roughly $39,000 in new taxes. So the building itself would generate $39,000. So the building itself would generate 39,000. Of that, a grant would be, if approved by the commissioners, of $33,591 back to the building's contractors and LLC, still netting the county roughly $6,000 that it's currently not generating. In year four, that grant would expire and the county would achieve full benefit. The Economic Development Commission Board approved this project back in January and Concord City Council approved grants on March 10th of this month. We do have a representative from the local ownership group who's putting this together and we'd be glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions for Mr. McDaniels?
It won't be built, or won't be built until it gets a tenant.
They are. Right now, the plans are in place. If you've been out there recently, they've actually done some of the grading. They've cleared up on the hill, so they're, they're almost ready to go. Once the market conditions are favorable, they can pull the trigger. Hopefully, what would occur is we'd have a tenant come into town who's looking for a build-to-suit environment and we would just easily pass this building along to them. We do have a company that'll be visiting it then this month, who we've previously shown this building to. And they hopefully will take it, much like occurred with Cell Guard, where if you remember with that scenario, the company, the same ownership group was getting ready to pull the trigger on construction. Cell Guard came in, the site worked for them, and we now have a tremendous investment and job base because of that project.
Well, I'm in favor of the building being built, but I'm not sure I'm in favor of the tax incentives for it.
Any other questions for Mr. McDaniels? I'll open this up for public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against the economic development grant for 390 Business? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any other questions for Mr. McDaniels? Mr. McDaniels, I have a couple for you. In regards to this building, the projected tax base of 39,519 is taxes. That is for the building itself.
Yes, sir.
Right now, it's vacant land.
Yes, sir.
And the land is generating less than $5,927 in tax revenue?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So by putting the building on it, we automatically receive more taxes. Okay. And the grant would not be started until the building is coming out of the ground or out of the ground?
Yes, sir. Once, normally the initiation period for us is a certificate of occupancy, so the building has to be in place before the ownership group can initiate any grant.
Okay. And whether it's a build-to-suit or leased, lease-to-suit, that the building itself would not, the, the grant wouldn't start until it was, you know, it's occupied or, well, excuse me, a certificate of occupancy is what you're talking about.
Yes, sir. They need to pay taxes before they receive any grant.
And the grant, this taxes need to be paid in full before the grant is remade, is rebated?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There any other questions based on what I brought up?
I would like to comment, there was a, I got, received an email this afternoon from Ronnie Bryant, who's the executive director of Charlotte Regional Partnership. And that's one thing he pointed out was about the spec building. So, Mr. McDaniels, I guess has that, so.
Oh, feel free.
No, I mean, I'll refer to you if you.
Yeah, it's very good reading. There's actually a comment throughout the country, between 70 and 80% of all projects request an existing building. In the Charlotte region, that number's 77%. So this building will hopefully become a magnet for us. And even if companies don't locate in this building, they'll still open up the county and they have to come visit Cabarrus County to, to see this building. So they really are magnets and we'd love to have another one to open us up for more potential business.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Poole?
I think this is, I've said it before, but probably not recently. I'm not a big fan of incentive grants, however, a minimum investment is, has to be at least one and a half million dollars. I built a business, building, bought some raw land and built a business about 12 years ago now. And it wasn't a one and a half million dollar building and I didn't expect to get any incentives because I didn't need a building that big and I didn't do that big of an investment. And I pay the taxes just like everybody else does. The thing about a building is jobs can get up and move, but the building's still going to be here. It may be operated by a business that's going to provide jobs for us, which is what we really want in the county. But the main thing about our incentive program is the real estate's there and there's a building that will be paying taxes to us. And once, without me scrolling down to the right page, because I don't know what page yours, there you go. In year four, we would be getting net taxes, that's even if the tax rate all stays the same and everything stays the same, of about $40,000. And hopefully, this building would bring, as you said, more people to the county. There are other lots out in that particular area and other areas of the county that are available for development. And we need to do whatever we can to broaden our tax base and not just have small businesses like mine was. It was a good business, I'm not knocking it. I enjoyed it for the 10 years that I operated it and I hope the current owners are enjoying it now. But we need more than just houses in the county. And as long as we can get some construction going, that's local people, this particular project has local people that will be working on it, that's important to put our construction workers back to work. And in year four, when this no longer, when the grant, incentive grant goes off, nobody's going to pick that building up and walk it across the county line somewhere. It's still going to be here and it's still going to be getting taxes. So as much as I, in all honesty, am not a huge fan of incentive grants, I do think that that is the hand that we are dealt all over the country and we need to be competitive. And if this is what it takes to be competitive, then I think we need to broaden our tax base. So I hope that we get more companies that want to build more buildings in the county and that'll help us to come out from the recession that we've been operating under. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Chairman, just a couple of things. I could, the, I think the important thing for us to think about with this thing as well is that we're not like Lincoln County and Gaston County and some other counties in our, in the Charlotte region. We don't have a publicly owned, you know, business park or industrial park that we've developed. A lot of counties develop that. That's where they put their, their economic development effort is in buying property, improving their property, building spec buildings. In fact, I know at least two counties in North Carolina right now that actually own vacant industrial buildings. The county owns them. And they, waiting for a new tenant to come in there. We don't have that here. We don't have a public industrial park. The closest we've got is the public-private partnership. We've done a couple, a couple of items with International Business Park. On the other end of the spectrum, you know, I know, you know, everybody hates the idea of paying for jobs and, you know, and on the other end of the spectrum, you have some places where they just open the checkbook up and write the check out to begin with. We don't even do that. What we do is back up from there and make companies pay all their taxes before they ever see any kind of tax incentive being paid back to them. And which puts the safeguard there, because I know that we've had a lot of people come before us, we've had a lot of incentive grants that we have, ran agreements that we've executed over the 10 years that I've been on this board, but I know that there's, out there, we've had probably a long list of those that never materialized. I'm thinking of a couple, one race operation in particular that was supposed to be going and growing and we didn't, nothing happened with it. I guess that being said is that to me, moving, the further we can move away from the pure out-and-out, you know, giving taxpayer dollars to private business to come to our community, backing that up more and more to the infrastructure side of development to make ourselves a magnet like this would be, is I think a good move for on our part to do that. Because it shows that we're interested in investing in the infrastructure. The private sector's doing the investment, we're not. That's, you know, we're just providing incentives for them to build that spec building and hopefully that will turn into, could turn into another Cell Guard.
Commissioner Meesmer?
In the, in the previous meeting, I stated my philosophy on incentives and I'm going to have to stick with that on this particular project. The, this particular project, the only jobs that it's going to create right now would be the construction jobs and constructing the building. There's no, there's no jobs attached to this. Also, I'd like to, you know, make the point and the argument that whenever this company receives the tax break, the tax incentive, there will be, there will be, I would presume, no reduction passed on to the tenant. Therefore, the company who owns the building is going to have the extra money that they would have paid in taxes. I don't think that it's, that reduction in tax bill's going to be pushed down to the tenants. Also, from a businessman's perspective, if you, if you're investing $6.2 million in a building, $100,000 is not going to be an incentive enough for you to go ahead and construct a building, start a new business. $100,000 for $6.2 million is not going to change that. And, I mean, that's with all the incentives. I, I truly believe that Cabarrus County is an attractive place in itself. I think it's incentive, we have good schools, we have the safety in the community and we have a lower tax rate than some of the surrounding counties. And I think that's what brings business in ourself. And I think that's what makes Cabarrus County attractive. That's an incentive in itself. Also, you know, just strictly looking at this as government business, I truly do not believe that the government should be meddling in private business. This is, this is intertwining private business and the government too much and I just, I cannot agree with that. If, if the company, just talking incentives roughly, if a company gets, has to pay the tax upfront and then it's reimbursed, if they've already paid the tax, why would we want to reimburse that? Why, if they have already paid the tax upfront, you know, why, why would we reimburse that? It's, it seems like they've already paid it. Whenever you're making a business decision, if you're a businessman and you're deciding whether to open a new business, relocate a business, you're looking at different items on a spectrum. You're looking at, like I said, the community, good schools, public safety, you're looking at a long-term investment, are you going to be in that area? You're looking at who your customers are going to be. A tax incentive is not going to entice you enough to bring you to that area to make your business successful. I truly believe that this is, you know, the, the money that would be, the grant that would be received is just peanuts compared to the overall investment. And I don't think that's going to deter any business from coming to Cabarrus County or starting a new business.
Well, that, that is certainly a position that a lot of people take and the, and the thoughts that I've been looking at and thinking about is, I had that belief at some one point in time and I've come around to change my point of view because if we didn't have to offer incentives, then we wouldn't need to have an economic development corporation because corp companies would be flocking to Cabarrus County. Because there's no doubt that through the leadership of Dr. Shepherd and Dr. Kane, we've got some of the best school system in the state of North Carolina. We've got the, a tax rate that is 20 cents lower than Cabarrus County, I mean, excuse me, Mecklenburg County, four cents lower than Stanley County. And I think it's lower than Lincoln, but I'm not certain about that. There's no doubt in my mind, we've got the best community in the whole area. But when I look over the past 18 months and see the businesses that are relocating to Mecklenburg County with their school system, which I, everybody has their own opinion about how good or how poor their school system is, it does not meet the standards that Cabarrus County meets. And Electrolux shows up over there and you have these other companies that are going into Mecklenburg County. I've changed my position and belief that they come to an area because of good schools and a low tax rate. There are companies that are looking for a place that they can immediately move into and start operating. And I think that what our EDC has done and what they're trying to do is that once they get here, to help them get a longer tap route in Cabarrus County. So that when they want to expand, they do expand, like we have just recently Cell Guard talking about and doing a $65 million expansion. So I think that there is a time and an opportunity that we need to provide that opportunity for a company and entice that company to come here and put our people to work. Because we have too large of an unemployment right now and we've got to figure out how we can do this. This is a way that we can provide an opportunity for a company to come here and also to come in here and we are not giving away buildings, we are not giving away land like other counties have done. So I would be in support of giving this economic development grant for 390 Business, part and parcel, because it doesn't start paying until the building is out of the ground. And as a businessman, I can't imagine them putting in anything and getting it out of the ground until they've got a tenant to go in or someone that's going to buy it. So that I think it is, it, we're not going to lose any money and in fact, we're actually going to gain money once it's out of the ground because we're going to get more property taxes than what we're receiving right now.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I could add too, and I think it's something to look at, kind of a bigger, even bigger picture from, beyond this one incident here. And I understand, Commissioner Meesmer, perfectly what you're talking about. I mean, a lot of people get upset that incentives, that's a big, it's been a big dividing point in our, you know, in the Republican Party over the last 10 years is what about incentives? And what about, how do we entice and attract business into the community? I actually sat down and looked about three years ago and I don't have the, obviously I have the figures right in front of me, but, and I, and believe it or not, I've showed you, I have, like I don't have enough to do, went through, kind of looked at the, the parcels in Cabarrus County, got the, got some information from the tax office on our parcels, which ones were coded for use as residential, commercial, and agricultural. And it's amazing the percentage at that time of the property in the county that was designated as resident, either residential or you had homes built on it or was being projected to have homes built on it. Then I went and looked too at what, at some other counties around the country. If you go and get it on the census data of what, places like Gwinnett County, Georgia, Loudoun County, Virginia, were basically bedroom communities. One of Atlanta, one of Washington DC. And I know it's been a dream here in the community for, you know, really the last 20 years that we have our own separate economic, you know, we can drive our own separate economic engine here, that we don't need to be just a bedroom community of Charlotte. But I know that we have a, thousands of people every day that leave this county and drive to Mecklenburg County to work. So what we've got to be able to do strategically is make that decision of what we're going to do as far as balancing that, that commercial and the residential development in the county. And also now the agricultural, because we've made a deliberate, you know, effort to preserve farmland in this county. So I think that we look at the big picture there, we've got to that. Because if we don't, if we get to the point where we've got 80, 90% of our property in the county is residential, then we won't be able to afford to live here because of the taxes. And the, the commercial investment in commercial real estate, industrial investment in this county helps to defray and lower that tax rate, you know, in the long term and bring it down so that we, we can still have the good school systems. We can still provide the quality of life that the citizens have come to expect here in Cabarrus County.
Do you have a motion to?
I move we approve the incentive agreement.
We have a motion to.
That motion.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any further discussion?
The only other comment that I would make is that we have local construction workers who have been out of jobs for a long time and this is a way for them to get jobs. It's not just about new jobs coming in. Those will come when the building goes up. But the people doing this project are going to hire local people to do the work and that's getting our current residents back to work, which is what I do think that we need to be focused on in trying to help not just people coming into the area, but also the people that are living here today. And we need to get our residents back to work and this is a, whatever, $6 million and plus project and that's money that will stay in the county and be used over and over again as a result of the people that are working on this project.
Commissioner Meesmer?
I, I want to be very clear with this as well. I am not anti-business by voting against this. If anyone on this board is pro-business, it would be myself. If anyone on this board is pro-business, it would be myself, my family and I, small business owners, I'm very much pro-business. This is not a vote against business. I just truly believe that government has no place in business. And these, the construction workers that will, uh, go to, go to work on this building, that's all dependent upon whether a tenant has found for this building. If there's no tenant, then there'll be, uh, there'll be no jobs provided for them.
Well, one thing I'm, I'm confused about is by awarding a grant, if that is what the vote is tonight, is how that is meddling in business or how that is government being involved in business, because it's a completely different transaction in regards to a business paying their taxes, and there is an agreement that 85% of those taxes that are paid go back to the developer, or actually to the owner of this property for a period of three years. So it, I don't understand how that is meddling or that is, um, doing business, getting in part and parcel or hand in hand, however you wanna say it, with a company.
Just the mere fact that this governing body is discussing a private business transaction is meddling in business. We are getting involved in trying to entice a business to emerge or relocate regardless of what incentive project it is. Just the mere fact that this governing body is discussing that is government involved in the private business.
Then, God bless my wife for marrying me, because I had the opportunity to say hello and give her some flowers and say, hey, I'm better than the next guy. And that gave me the opportunity to put my foot in the door and get to talk to her and for her to get to know me better. And this is a way that I see us doing, is it gets the opportunity for people to be put back to work in Cabarrus County. Our employment is way too high, and we've gotta figure out what we're gonna do instead of sitting around with our hands on our, or sitting on our hands. We've got a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, 3-2. Thank you.
I would, um, for one quick second, uh, the Cell Guard, um, I know there's a lot of people in the crowd who are interested in employment, they have listed their opportunities on the website, and we'll be glad to get that.
What website?
The Cell Guard, um, USA, it's under HR, and then there's, uh, opportunities now for the new Concord operation, so.
Cell Guard, USA website.
Uh, Cell Guard, if you Google Cell Guard, it'll pop up, and then look at HR.
And it's Cell Guard, C-E-L-G-A-R-D.
And we'll get that to the clerk so she can distribute that or, or list that properly, but, thank you.
Thank you. Next matter we have is, um, G2 is Transportation, North Carolina Department of Transportation, Division, Section 5, 5311 Grant for the Fiscal Year 2011, 2012, and a Public Hearing, Mr. Bass.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for this time. Uh, tonight, we're gonna ask that you hold a public hearing for our annual request to the State of North Carolina for assistance in operating for our Cabarrus County Transportation Services. This year, we're seeking $344,692, and we ask that you open a public hearing for that amount.
Is there any questions for Mr. Bass right now? I'll open this.
What, what, uh, $344,000, what, what amount of money is brought in off of the, uh, transportation system?
We, uh, this money is to offset the operating expenses. This is funding we receive from the state to pay, help pay for our drivers, help pay for our, our office supplies and things, rental of buildings. It's assistance that we receive as part of the federal pass-through grant.
Will it ever be self-supporting?
At this time, Commissioner, uh, I don't see that happening anywhere in the near future.
And, any other questions for Mr. Bass? I'll open this up for a public hearing. Anybody who'd like to speak for or against, uh, the Fiscal Year 2011, 2012 Community Transfer Program Resolution? Uh, I do not see anybody. I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions for Mr. Bass?
Yeah, just one, Randy, the, uh, and, maybe getting confused here because of all the hats I wear, but part of this money is the money that's given per vehicle for, to pay the cost of insuring.
That is correct.
Right?
Yes. That is, that includes our insurance costs and a lot of other administrative assistance that they give us.
Okay, okay.
Do we have a motion to adopt the Fiscal Year 2011, 2012 Community Transportation Program Resolution and Human Service Agency Transportation Resolution?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, do we have any other discussion? Now, these $344,000 is not coming from the county?
No, sir.
Okay. And there is a percentage that the county would pay?
Yes, sir, so just the local match received the funds, yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Next matter is G3. That's found on page 153 of our agenda. This is the Board of Elections' presentation, uh, for the Construction Cost Bid Summary and Updated Project Ordinance. At this time, I call on Mr. Downs to make the presentation, and if you'll ask anybody to come up, that needs to come up.
Uh, this project is, uh, sort of the, the final act here for a project that's been going on for about three years, trying to find a location or a new location for the Board of Elections to move to, both, uh, to get out of a building that is in, uh, need of a lot of repairs, uh, and also allow them room to expand, uh, and also bring in their, right now, they've, they're, uh, working out of the Board of Elections' building that is to the rear of our building here, but they're also working out of a warehouse space that is at the old Odell School, uh, Elementary School, and that's where we're storing a lot of our machines. So several months ago, after, uh, an exhaustive search of about 30 different sites, uh, the Board selected the Creamery, the old Creamery Building located on North Church Street. Uh, at that time, uh, the architecture firm of Yates, Kreitzberg, and Hughes was brought on, as well as construction manager at RISC and Black. Uh, together, they designed, uh, the interior or the outfit of the property, uh, all along, doing value engineering throughout the process. And we are here, it has been completely designed, uh, and CM Black Construction is now offering their guaranteed maximum price, uh, which would be amendment number one to the original contract, uh, when, as when we brought on CM Black. So in your packets there, uh, you have the executive summary within their packets. The grand total for the guaranteed maximum price is $1,178,034. And that includes, uh, the total, uh, the trades, all of the trades. Uh, again, these, these packages were, were crafted so that local subcontractors were able to bid, uh, and as a result, every single trade was bid out with a minimum of three, uh, three separate bids. And with that, I believe the number was approximately 30% local contractors were awarded as low bidders and will be participating in the job, as well as CM Black Construction is also a, a local company as well. So what we're asking the Board, uh, Mr. Black is here, Mr. Kreitzberg and Mr. Hughes are here from the architecture firm, if you have any questions. Again, this is the Creamery Building, it is just over 10,000 square feet, and it will house the Board of Elections, both their offices, their, uh, warehouse space, uh, a large, a community room that will hold somewhere between 50 to 60 people, uh, that, that one-stop voting could also take place in that location. In non-election times, uh, that, that space will be available to all of our other departments as, and well, possibly the, the public. And then as far as in an emergency situation, it will also be wired so that we could either relocate our emergency operating center there or even open up a small shelter in, in that location as well.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Downs?
Yeah, just a couple. One of them was, and I guess I kinda answered that a little bit, but the IT work, I assume, is being, cable and everything's being done internally? Or is that, because I noticed that wasn't in the.
That is a separate, that is a separate vendor.
Okay.
And it, it, some of that will be internally, but the, the major part of the work is a, is a private vendor.
Okay, okay. So we'll do that as a separate contract then, the IT?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will that be part of the furnishings then, that, uh, in the furnishing, because I know the, but, total budget's 2.5.
That's correct. It's not part of the furnishings, it is part of the other improvements.
Other, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, also, and Stan, I don't know whether you can do this, could do this real quick, and I'm gonna put you on the spot, but, uh, I know that for the public to understand, traditionally, when you have projects, you have open bidding, several contractors bid on it, and there's a, you know, general contractor is then awarded the contract, he's usually the low bid, and there's a difference between that and what we're doing here, and I wonder if you maybe could explain real quick, because the only other, the project we've done it on has been the, uh, the law enforcement complex and the jail.
That's correct.
Yeah, and how this, how this works, and what guaranteed minimum, maximum price means, what, you know, their estimated, the, the date of completion they're giving us and everything.
The, the traditional way that's been done, especially by the county, uh, prior to, uh, the law enforcement complex was to, uh, go through the process, you hire a, an architectural firm, they design, uh, the entire project, uh, all the way to construction drawings, and then those construction drawings are presented to, um, the public in order to bid, uh, based on those drawings. Uh, at that time, you hire or you select a, a low bidder or a general contractor who would manage the job. A lot of times in that process, um, there are things that need to go back and be changed, just simply because once you get in the field, there, there are some things that may not work with the design that wants, that's not discovered until the contractor's actually in place and, and, uh, during construction. What we've done here, and what the Board selected to do, uh, is to go the CM at risk or construction manager at risk, whereas you, you request proposals or qualifications, or a request for qualifications from contracting firms or construction managers, you make that selection early in the process so that the contractor can work alongside the architect during the design, and, and together, uh, they've, they were able to bounce ideas off. If the architect's firm, uh, proposes something in design or material, uh, the, the contractor is there in order to evaluate that, is that the best material, can there be something cheaper to achieve the same thing? Uh, so in a sense, value engineering starts from the very beginning of the design stage instead of at the, at the end, when you have a final product. So as far as, once you select the, the construction manager at risk, that construction manager at risk is also responsible for, for accumulating a list of qualified bidders. So while a general contractor processed, there is an open bid process, there is also an open bid process in, in the CM at risk process as well. The CM at risk contractor will craft those individual packages, and they can craft them as large as they need to or as small as they need to, uh, and this is one of the processes that has worked very well, both in the law enforcement complex and this project as well, that there are some local builders, there's some, some, some contractors, based, just based on the size of their company, uh, and their assets, they're not able to bid on, on larger projects. So, uh, CM Black crafted their, uh, their packages within the, within the total project so that more local bidders were able to bid on it. They didn't all win the low bid, but they were able to, to bid on it just based on how the, uh, the packages were designed and laid out. Uh, as a result, again, uh, a little over 30% local contractors were selected as low bidders and will be participating in the project. So while there is a bid process, uh, in the general contractor's selection, there is also a bid process, uh, that is in the construction manager at risk process. And then, again, you have the relationship with the owner, uh, the county as far, as well as the architect and the contractor from the very beginning of the process, and it, and it proves beneficial in the end to, to have a better building, uh, less change orders throughout the process, because you've already worked a lot of that out, and you've done a lot of value engineering through the process.
And if the, the price comes back more than the guaranteed maximum price, then...
That's correct. There, and, and it is a guaranteed maximum price, the contractor has, um, bid it out, uh, in addition, uh, with his fees on top, there is a guaranteed maximum price. So anything that goes over that, uh, price that you are now getting tonight, uh, it would be the responsibility of the contractor, uh, as long as it is within the construction drawings that were, the design that was bid. If the county goes back in and says, oh, we wanna add, you know, another 30 feet on the end of the building, then, then that, of course, would not be included. But, uh, as, as it, as the title says, it is a construction manager at risk. Uh, so they are, they are assuming some of the risk in the end, and they, they feel comfortable that the bids that they have received, uh, are sufficient enough to do the work that's described in the plans that the architects, the architects have, uh, produced.
Any other questions for Mr. Downs? Any other information?
Are the plans set like you want them, without a bunch of change orders once you get started?
Yes, sir. The, uh, Board of Elections, uh, both the Board and the staff have been through several rounds of, of, of looking at the plans. We've made changes, both our staff, general services staff from the mechanical and the operating part of the building, were, were very satisfied with that. Uh, so it is our, it is our intention, there is a small contingency built into the, into the project, but, uh, and, and as you know, Mr. Burge, with, with most projects, there's always something that may pop up, but I think we have done our best to minimize that process and the need to pull any of that money. And the other thing with this project, if any of the contingencies that are not used will come back to the county, they do not stay with the contractor.
Any other questions?
And I'm not sure how much we're, look on the hook, I mean, or how much, and, and I'm not sure, I don't think anybody in finance on the spot tonight, but the, the, what we're estimating is going to be returned as final for the jail project.
The preliminary numbers, don't hold me exactly to this.
Yeah, don't.
It's going to be somewhere after we complete, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll, we'll get that final negative change order back, that we should be receiving somewhere in the neighborhood of about $1.3 million.
Okay.
Back from Turner Construction.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, the, the subcontractors, um, what is considered local? Is that just within Cabarrus County, or is that whenever you go in?
I can, uh, call on Mr. Black if he can tell you exactly what his, uh, where he was pulling from.
Yes, local would be within Cabarrus County, and pretty close. Cabarrus and Roan is where most of these are from. But the 30, the 30% he was talking about is from Cabarrus County.
'Cause it looks like the majority are Cabarrus, Cabarrus, Roan, and some in Mecklenburg.
That's correct.
But it's not a whole bunch in Mecklenburg, but it seems like it was, majority is Cabarrus, obviously, and then, um, a little bit in Roan, and then a little bit less in Mecklenburg. Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price and authorize the county manager to execute the amendment number one to the existing contract between Cabarrus County and CM Black, subject to revisions by the county attorney and adopt the amended project ordinance. So moved, Mr. Chairman? I'll second that. Do we, um, have any further discussion?
Just one more question, if I could. I'm sorry, I, uh, I did not see in here anywhere where the, are we asking for a date of substantial completion? Is that included, or just in?
That, that is correct. That, that will be amended on the contract tomorrow before it is signed, but the, the contractor says as soon as the building is available, uh, he will move in, and the, the date of substantial completion is August 31st.
Okay.
And that will give us a little over, or approximately two months to get, get the Board of Elections in place prior to the, uh, the elections.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment. Um, I was not in favor of this particular location that the previous board approved. However, that being said, I think that when you're at this part in the, in the project, that, um, because the previous board approved it, then, um, I don't see any reason why, at this point in time, to go against, um, that, that approval, because the, um, the contractor, the architects have been doing exactly what the majority of the board at the time chose to do, which was to relocate the Board of Elections' building at this site. It's obvious to anybody that drives by that the current building is, um, in, what do I wanna say, less than operable condition. There's a big crack on the side if you haven't noticed it, and, um, there's been some patchwork done to get through that. Um, but with that being said, even though I am against this particular location, I do think that you have to step up and honor, um, decisions that are made by a majority of the board, and that would be the reason for me to vote in favor of moving forward with the project.
Any other comments? I would say that the, in looking at the plans, uh, you know, my hat's off to Bill Hughes and Mr. Kreitzberg, I'm not certain if Mr. Yates had any involvement in this, but, um, the design that's come up is a multi-use design, and getting to what Commissioner Burge was saying, uh, I think it's an opportunity that if... I think it's an opportunity that if something were to happen, we could literally pick up the insides, or the innards, as my grandmother used to say, and move it to another location and plop it down. So it has a lot of multi-use, and my hat's off to them, and I look forward to seeing the opportunity for the ladies that are in the Board of Elections now, have a little opportunity to spread out a little bit, because they certainly are on top of one another, and being out at the off-site location to get the voting units, or voting machines, up and running and trained on people, I'd pull my hair out. So I'm certainly going to be voting for this. With that being said, we have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
One thing, too, Mr. Chairman, we didn't bring up, has nothing to do with the vote, but realize that that Board of Elections where it's sitting at now, I think was there when I moved here in 1995, and pretty much, the population's pretty much doubled in the last 20 years in the county, and I think it's in the same space it was in then.
Could you hold that comment one quick? We have some young men that are in the audience, from a local Boy Scout. If you can come up and tell us where you're from, because it's very important for y'all to get y'all's badge, and we appreciate y'all coming in. I hate to interrupt, but I know y'all need to get home and get studying, because I know that y'all want to get y'all's homework done. Yeah. If y'all could come up and just introduce yourself, and when you finish introducing yourself, if you'll go over to your left, Commissioner Poole has a pen for you. If you can come up to the microphone, it won't bite.
Hello, my name is Chase Brown. I'm the Senior Patrol Leader, and...
Where are you from? What's your troop?
We're Troop 91.
And where is Troop 91 located?
St. James Lutheran, just down the road.
Thank you, Chase. If you'll go over here.
You'll pull the microphone.
You can pull the microphone down, if you want. You can pull the microphone down, it won't break. There you go.
My name is Sawyer Brown, and I'm his brother, and I've been in Troop 91 since 2010, and I'm a rank of Boy Scout.
Thank you very much, Sawyer.
My name is Andrew Cameron. I've been with the troop for a year. I am the rank of First Class.
Thank you, Andrew.
I'm Jay Cruz. I've been in the troop for two years, and I'm the rank of Star.
Thank you, Jay.
My name's Baylor Helms. I've been in Boy Scouts for a year, and I'm a Boy Scout.
Thank you, Baylor. You can pull it down.
My name's Tyler Helms. I started in 2010, and I'm a Wolf Scout.
Thank you, Tyler.
I am Hunter Elliott, and I am in the Wolf Patrol.
Thank you, Hunter.
My name is Owen Chapley, and I'm a Second Class.
Thank you, Owen.
My name is Grant Weisler, and I'm a Star Scout.
Thank you, Grant.
I'm David Cruz. I'm one of the Assistant Scout Masters at Troop 91. I'm also a Assistant District Commissioner for the Concord District of Boy Scouts. The Boy Scouts that are here tonight are participating in this meeting as part of their Communications Merit Badge, which is an Eagle Required Merit Badge.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz has an Eagle Scout in his family, so he knows all the rigors of what it takes to go through the process, I believe.
That is correct.
I hate to interrupt you, I hated to interrupt Commissioner Cruz.
I was just making a point that we've, I think over the last 20 years, we've doubled in population, and we've got the same size election offices we had 20 years ago. And to me, it's very important, because that's the point where, that's the one point where government and the public meet each other, is at the elections office. And I think it would be very good, citizens will be very proud of the facility that's going to be built over there, so.
I agree. Next matter we have is G4, is the local bid preference, consideration request to add Cabarrus County to Senate Bill 291. And Mr. Day is not here. He has been on a scheduled vacation. I think he talked to me about being on vacation about a month and a half ago, and he has the opportunity to step away, and he is not here tonight. But he did, I don't know if, Mr. Downs, if you have any information on this?
This is a local bill that's been brought up by Senator Hartzell on behalf of Catawba County, and it's timely, since we were just talking about the bid process, and also the availability to use, or the opportunity to use local contractors and vendors. This would permit Catawba County, if they receive all of their bids back on a construction project, if the low bidder is not local, and the second lowest bidder is within 5% or within $10,000 of that low bid, then it gives the opportunity to go to that local bidder and negotiate, and get them to a point where that it would be back equal with the low bidder. It gives them the opportunity to go and try to secure the local bidder, when they're not always going to be the lowest bidder. So, it's, Mr. Day brought it before the board here, to consider requesting Senator Hartzell to attach or include Cabarrus County on that local legislation.
Okay. Any questions? I think it's certainly something, another effort that we can step forward in trying to help our local people. We have a motion to forward a request to Senator Hartzell to include Cabarrus County in Senate Bill 291.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Aye.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next matter that we have is G5, is the Council for a Sustainable Local Economy. This is, we have a request to approve the attached memorandum of understanding with Mr. Michael Schuman. This is an opportunity for this board to employ Mr. Schuman to come in and help and work with the council, to do a leakage report, to do some studies, to figure out what can be done, to help more of the local, small to medium-sized businesses, and provide a stronger opportunity for them to grow locally. But this is a cost of approximately $45,000, and if I remember correctly, these are monies that are coming through a grant from the Cannon Foundation. So these are not monies coming from the county, but they're coming from the Cannon Foundation. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them as best as I can at this time.
I think we've kind of talked about this one for a good little while, about trying to help the local economy, and this is an expert in the area that can come in, and there are a number of different entities and persons that they would be interviewing to develop this plan. It's not a plan that would sit on a shelf, it's a plan that the Council for a Sustainable Local Economy can embrace, embrace to help them to do their function, to help our economy become more resilient and robust, and hopefully to support our local entrepreneurs. So, I think this is a good way for us to go.
Mrs. Dubois?
Just to clarify, there was a $50,000 grant from the Cannon Foundation, and the county put $50,000 towards the project.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is that a one-year contract?
It is, yes, sir. It is a one-year contract, and what he, the idea is that he'll come up with a five-year plan about what can be done over the next five years, doing a SWOT analysis of strength and weakness.
Communities and threats.
Okay, thank you. Doing an analysis to figure out what can be done to help our local businesses, and I believe that he actually is coming in to speak at the Economic Development Corporation Stakeholder Meeting, which is going to be, it'll be interesting to hear him talk. Anyway, so we have, do we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Mr. Schuman?
I would make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next matter we have is G6, is the sale or disposition of county property. This time I call him Mr. Marshall.
Thank you. This item is coming before you to determine the consensus or direction the board would like for us to take on some additional property that the county owns, that we've had some interest expressed in. The county owns approximately 10.25 acres at the corner of Union Cemetery and Cabarrus Avenue. It is the site of the former fairgrounds, that property that's left after the bus garage was built. At one point, of course, we were looking at that for an additional county building that would have housed Board of Elections, and of course, by the actions you've taken this evening, that will be located elsewhere. So we've had two different parties that have been interested in the two acres that's directly at the corner of Cabarrus Avenue and Union Cemetery. Neither have made a formal offer to us. There are options we have, or that the board has, if you wish to pursue or make that available, to sell that property. One is the sealed bid process that you've used in the past, where you can add some conditions to that, some kind of a base of value that it would have to exceed to come back to you. Certainly, if it's just a straight sealed bid, it can also just come back to you, and you would have to, could accept or reject that. The other option that we've used in the past is a negotiated bid, and it would come before the board for approval, and then you would go through an upset bid process, where it would be advertised at what that price is, and then an upset bid would have to exceed it by a set amount. And so, I guess the first item is to determine if the board has interest in pursuing the sale of those two acres at the corner. Again, these are private businesses, so it would move from property that's currently owned by the county into a taxable status also. And if you would like to move forward with that, to give us direction on how you would like to do so.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Marshall?
Are these, the map that we're given, there's one that's 1.05 acres, and another that's .9 acres. Is that, one business is looking for one parcel, and the other business is looking for the other, or we have two that are interested in approximately the total two acres?
They're interested in the two acres. There may in fact be some variation in the property lines in their ultimate bid, to determine if their business would fit there, maybe additional property that they would want to purchase. But what they, their initial interest was in those two acres. These are just the existing parcel lines. At some point in the past, there was a number of parcels, and rather than recombine them, it gave us flexibility to leave them separate. So they're, these are just, it just reflects the existing property lines.
So there's two businesses that are interested in the...
In two acres.
The two-acre parcel, in a two-acre parcel.
Right. We actually tried to, we actually had some discussions with them about jointly purchasing the property, and both businesses locating there, and they really just could not make the footprint of their buildings work for that.
Any other questions?
What was their bid on the two acres?
They have not formally bid on that two acres, so.
You're asking for us to give y'all some guidance as to how we would move forward with those two acres?
If you would like, if you're interested in pursuing a sale of the property, and then how we would move forward with that, if you'd like to set a minimum value. I did work with Chris Ferriss in our tax office to try and find some comparable sales. Unfortunately, there aren't, there are a couple of sales that have occurred in the last two years. Particularly, you may have seen the O'Reilly Auto Parts as being constructed down at Clear Springs Plaza there. The difference is that this property will require more improvements, because of the road improvements that'll be necessary to Union Cemetery. We have constructed a stormwater basin on the property. When we did demolition, General Services made sure we constructed a stormwater basin that could be used in the future when it was developed. So that's in place, but anyone developing this will need to connect their stormwater to that. So there are some outfit costs or construction costs that are unique to this property.
There's some turn lane issues, and some other things that would be...
There are, and certainly the rock is an issue. We have done, I think, fairly extensive explorations, we've been able to provide that data to them. Of course, any business would want to do some further exploration, but we do have some of that in place. They know what they'll be dealing with.
I would be interested in at least having conversations to find out, you know, what the offer would be, and especially putting it back on the tax rolls, versus it being county-owned property. So I would say that we need to move forward. I haven't been on the board long enough to where we've really done much as far as upset bid. I know the commission's done that in the past, so I don't really know, and I don't know if legal counsel is the one that can, or those of you that are more experienced that may have a feeling for just doing a sealed bid, and see what comes through, or to do an upset bid. I don't know that I have enough expertise at this time to...
Well, our options right now are private negotiation, which we can't do, because it's valued at more than $30,000, or it better be.
It is.
We can't do exchange, which is fine, well, we can, but I don't see why we would do an exchange. So it would be either advertisement for sealed bids, negotiated offer, advertisement and upset bid, or public auction. I'm not inclined to support public auction. So it'd either be advertisement for sealed bids or negotiated offer. I think the better opportunity is do a negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid. The downside to that, I see, is the length of time, because you have to go through so many, probably, months before it actually gets resolved. But it may give the opportunity to get the highest value, not only for the county, but also for that entity, and then we'd move forward. My gut feeling would be six months minimum, but I'm not certain about that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could chime in as the unofficial board historian over here. I think we've been dealing with this for 10 years. I've been on the board, just seeing a piece of property, because the decision to move the fair was done back in 1999, I think it was. And, you know, we've, I think, and I don't mean this reflexively and stuff, but I think we've used the value of the property to balance, I think, at least three different budgets over the past 10 years, that we were going to sell the property. In fact, one time, I think we even marketed, brought in, I mean, Jerry Newton came in, and I think he had a contract on it for a while, to actually subdivide it, market it for us, and, you know, then we found, you know, did the bus garage over there, and, you know, the latest attempt was ours to do the auxiliary county building, which tonight, we've actually, part of that money that we had reserved for that is going to do the Elections building. So I think, as far as time is concerned, I don't know whether, you know, if we've waited 10 years, whether six months is going to be that big of a wait or not. So I have a tendency to kind of favor the negotiated sale and upset bid process myself. It's probably just the best way to go with this, and let it, just see what happens, you know.
Yeah, are there any other ideas or thoughts? Is there a consensus that we do a negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid? Do we have a motion to open up for the possible sale, approximately two acres, located as what's been presented to us? Okay, so let's make certain we understand what the motion is. The motion is that we will place as an option for sale, 2.95 acres, plus or minus, located at the corner of, I mean, excuse me, 1.95 acres, located at Cabarrus and Union Cemetery Road, the corner, under the option of a negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-266. Is there anything else I need to cover? Mr. Cook?
I think the actual statute number that you're referring to for this type of process would be 168-269.
269?
Yes.
Okay.
But basically, the way it'll work is if one or another of these folks make an offer, then at that point, we do a notice, and then the upset period would begin, and that's all, would be part of the public notice.
And we would bring that offer back to you to, you would need to accept that offer prior to us than advertising for upset bids. So it will come back to you before any final decision is made, or any even interim decision is made.
And for everybody's awareness, is that the preliminary matters, or what needs to be done to actually execute this and move this forward, can be turned over to the county manager and the county attorney, but not the sale. That's part of the motion. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under G7, we have the emergency management non-renewal of the fire protection contract with Jackson Park Volunteer Fire Department. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'll try not to bust your eardrums out with the mic tonight. The request before you tonight is a consideration to authorize the county manager to send a letter to the Jackson Park Fire Department, advising them of non-renewal for a fire protection contract effective July 1st. As we discussed in the work session, the Jackson Park Fire Department is basically mostly surrounded now by municipal departments that are able to provide this service. County staff has evaluated, and we feel this is the direction the county needs to move. So again, the consideration is before you to authorize the county manager, because our contract requires a 90-day... contract requires a 90-day notice, which would be April 1st, that this letter would need to be sent per our contract requirements. So I'd be happy to address any questions I could.
Any questions for Mr. Smith?
We've got a few. The 90-day notice, I mean, I deal in a world where we deal with notices and things like that, you have to have it a certain period of time. Does that mean that necessarily they would be shut down on July 1st, or does that mean that we're just giving them the 90-day notice?
That's the 90-day notice. The decision could be made to rescind that letter or other options if they came available. No, it's not set in stone. This Board could direct other action to the manager. Yes, sir.
Now, do the, but also, if we, normally what we do in our budget, obviously budget ordinance, is approve the fire tax for the fire districts, which includes the sales tax disbursement based upon the property tax rate that they get in that fire district. If we were to say, okay, we're not going to terminate it July 1st, but we want to terminate it December 31st in the middle of the year, can we do that in the middle of the year, or do we have, does it have to be on the fiscal year?
I would have to defer to Mr. Bois on the tax.
In regards to the tax, the tax could be shifted probably at any point in time.
Which tax?
Fire tax.
Fire tax.
And sales tax.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, I think that's possible. We'd have to, I guess, Mr. Cook and I would have to do some research along with Mr. Smith. But yeah, the other option, the other, the other player in the game, whether, which municipality that the Board decides to go with, would also have to agree to that as well, to pick it up midstream as well.
Okay. I mean, I just wondered if we had any, I know that Mr. Monty was concerned, I can't understand what he's saying, is that what, what has been our transition period on previous fire departments? This is, you know, arguably, I would think, and just sitting here, I believe this is the most urbanized fire department of the volunteer fire districts.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
You know, to me, it seems to me that is there, needs to be a longer period of time. That's what I'm wondering about. Should we go with six months, nine months? You know, and I know it's, you know, the 90-day requirement is the legal requirement to notify them, but, you know, some kind of written plan or a transition plan of how that's going to happen and how, you know, Concord or if Concord or Harrisburg, whoever's going to take over the fire district.
I think, I think, excuse me, go ahead, if you want to answer that.
Historically, we've always gone at the beginning of the contract period to go with that. And I guess a point of clarification is that while the contract would end July 4th, that would not dissolve the corporation. The fire department is a nonprofit corporation and it would be up to them to decide again where their members would go, where their assets would be distributed. And again, that would, however long that takes, they will not have to have all that done July 1st. They would have to, again, get legal counsel and start the dissolution process for the corporation. And that would have that planned out as far as what they do with their assets. Again, that, that decision does not have to be made July 1st.
The, I know I brought this up in our work session about, I don't know what work session or afterwards when we were discussing it, is there other roles? You know, because, I mean, I look, I see the fire department and know 57 years, and I'm not sure who the number one, the oldest and second oldest department, being the third oldest fire department. And like I said, it's a, and I thank, you know, thank all these guys for the fire department, what they've done, services they've provided to our community over these years. But, and it's not an easy thing to do, to dissolve or to break the contract or to not renew the contract with the fire district. But have we thought of other things that we could, that the fire department could be used for, utilized? And I think it's a future for other volunteer fire departments because in the county, in the role they can play in, you know, fire prevention, education, training, those kind of things.
Absolutely. Again, our volunteers are of utmost importance to the county over the 57 years and then some with the departments. You know, they've saved the county hundreds of millions of dollars in services. There are opportunities. Two of the proposals that were put out last year would be going to volunteer in another department or going on reserve in another department. Also, several of the members already live in other fire districts and are members also of other fire departments and on those rosters. So the opportunity to serve for most of them will still be there in some capacity. It just wouldn't be with the Jackson Park Fire Department.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, what's before the Board tonight is just permission to send the notification to the fire department advising them of the non-renewal. If in the next 90 days during the budget process, there is another option negotiated, whether it's an extra six months, if it's another year, that, that, that letter can be rescinded. It doesn't, you don't have to go through with it. So all, all Mr. Smith and Mr. Langer are asking for now is, is permission to send the letter and formally notify Jackson Park Volunteer Fire Department that it is their recommendation that they would not, that they would recommend to the Board that they would not continue to contract for services with Jackson Park as of June 30th. Again, as, as staff continues to evaluate and presents, ultimately presents to the Board, the budget process, through the budget process, and then there would be an additional decision that you would need to make at that time, whether to go and contract and who to contract with.
Yeah, I mean, the option pretty much, I mean, is, we're looking pretty much at Concord right now, aren't we, or is it?
There, there's two options. One is the city of Concord and one is the town of Harrisburg. Right now, the district is completely enclosed by the, or the majority of it is enclosed by the city of Concord. And they also already have a station, I'm not sure, the distance, a mile away, mile and a half away?
Yes, sir. It's actually right in the middle of almost of the district.
Right. Where are the funds that go to that fire department now? If you take them away, where are they going to go?
With whoever we contract with, whichever department.
I mean, look, the man asked for, what, he asked for a year?
Yes, sir.
Extension. If they've been there 57 years, what, $30,000, he said?
Yes, sir.
$30,000. If they've been there 57 years, it looks to me like the county ought to give them the benefit of the doubt and give them that year extension.
Will the residents of this district, if their, their homeowner's insurance that they get to protect their home in the event of a fire, that's your area, not mine, but nonetheless, there's a rating that you get?
Yes, ma'am.
So if the city takes it over, would the residents, or if we contracted with the city of Concord, since that's the one that's been talked about the most, or the city of Harrisburg, would the residents see a change in their ratings for their homeowner's insurance, which means the residents would then potentially have a lower insurance premium that they would pay? Or do you have any way of knowing that?
We possibly could see a change in the rating and could possibly see savings if that rating drops significantly. Again, that's going to be up to the individual insurance companies and the individual property and their risk. Mr. Carruth could probably address more of that, but it's a case by case, the residential and their, their companies and their risk. But there is a potential there. Yes, ma'am.
If it goes to Harrisburg, wouldn't it be further away? Harrisburg Fire Department?
Yes, sir. Parts of, yes, most of it would be.
So their, their insurance rates would probably go up if it went to Harrisburg?
I think it would probably stay the same. Again, I don't have that data before me. I don't think you would see a lowering. I could be wrong, Steve. And a fire marshal will address that.
I mean, there are a number of issues involved and the one that I'm trying to get at is with the residents, is there the potential that the residents would have a lower homeowner's premium as a result of being covered by, and I'm going to say the city of Concord because when I drive through that area, that's the one that I identify with. And I understand there's two options, but that's the one that, that I identify with as being right in that general area. So I'm wondering if the residents would benefit from the change?
There is a potential, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, there's a, I don't know, Mr. Langer may be ready to speak about ISO ratings and that kind of stuff, so it's, but every department has that, has one. And I'm not sure, I think Concord's a three?
They are. Concord's a three and the businesses within that district would definitely benefit from the lower rating. And then it would be up to the individual insurance companies as far as residential. And to address your question, Mr. Commissioner, as far as Harrisburg, there's parts of the district that would probably keep the same rating, but there are parts of that district that would be further away, would probably be beyond five miles and six miles, and that could affect those people's rating that live beyond that distance.
If you're, if it's with Harrisburg?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I'm kind of in agreement with Mr. Burridge that with this $30,000, the estimated savings and, you know, we've got, and I don't want to, you know, I mean, I know what we want to try to do and I believe, and I think that Mr. Monty mentioned it, the fire department understands that as well, what the long-term goal is, is to work out all the details since this is more of an urban fire department we've got here is that, you know, setting that date 12 months from now for, you know, in one more year and during this year, we can work out all that stuff. Plus, even if, it'd be helpful even to have some public meetings with the neighborhood in the fire, in the fire district to understand what's going to be happening, what's occurring. It may lower the, some of the misunderstandings that may occur over such a short notice residents and help the citizens to understand it better, what's happening, what's been going on.
Yeah, and if I could just address one point, the fire marshal staff in our office did not just look at cost savings. We did look at, again, all of our fire departments are suffering from the same problem and that's the lack of volunteerism today and having the availability. That's why the Board put in a grant, staffing grant to help staff eight to five, you know, during the week. But again, I think my numbers of Mr. Mooney's may be a little different, but some of the things we looked at as a staff is that, looking at their roster, they only have two that actually live in their district. And 67% in the last year only responded to less than 10% of the calls in that district. And 30% of the members live greater than five miles away from the station. So I just want you to understand that it's not just a dollar figure the staff was looking at when bringing this recommendation to you. It's also a service level question. Again, appreciate the service and thankful for the service. And again, they are suffering from the same thing all our departments are suffering from and available volunteers, but they're in a unique situation than the rest of our departments that they are surrounded by a municipal department, basically that can provide the service.
In the 57 years they've been there, have they ever failed to make a fire call without the hip to take care of the fire?
Not, the 10 years I've been here, I'm not aware of them failing to make a call. But again, when we look at service levels, it's just not making a call, it's turning out enough people on a call, turning out of people in a timely manner. It's more than just checking the block that you made the call.
In other words, they can't do that?
They are doing that, sir, but I'm saying that there's a service level that they can provide the service, they're providing the service, but if there's an opportunity to provide better service and possibly see a potential savings to the homeowners, again, potentially, this is all hypothetical without running numbers from the insurance companies, then staff evaluates that and brings those recommendations to you for consideration. But I did want you to understand it was not just a dollar figure savings.
I mean, my thing is after 57 years, I think we ought to give them the benefit of the doubt and let them go the year and see what they're going to do. If they want to merge with some other volunteer fire department or whatever they're going to do, if they need the time to do it, they should be allowed to do it.
Mr. Burridge, I don't want to sway your decision one way or the other, but in, ultimately, in the end, the decision is yours as to who you contract with. They can make their, they can make this decision as to where their assets go, but ultimately it is the Board of Commissioners who would make the decision which direction that they would go to contract for that service in that district. What they're asking for, again, you know, if you can vote tonight to, to shut the process down, not issue the letter and go for another year, or it'll be evaluated again next spring when it comes time for budget. The other is to issue the letter, let Bobby and Steve and the rest of their staff continue to, to pull together some information, statistics for you to look at during the budget process. The $30,000 that is talking about, it's not, the tax rate is the tax rate and it's going to generate the revenues as far as the sales tax. The $30,000 that they're referring to is the grant that the Board has approved over the last several years to assist with manning the station and having somebody there 24 hours a day, or at least during peak, peak hours, so that all of the volunteers don't have to go to the station to pick up the truck. There's somebody there getting the truck rolling and then they can go directly to, to the scene. So that's what the $30,000 is. It is that grant money. Again, the revenues, they are what they are. It's just a matter of, if, if you continue to contract with a volunteer fire department, then, then they would be eligible for that $30,000 grant. If you're contracting with Concord, there would not be the availability for the grant. Harrisburg at this time is, is receiving that $30,000 grant, but then that, that too will be evaluated during this budget process as well. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, I mean, and I understand where you're going. I guess the thing for me is that there's a deadline of giving a notice. I think there's more information that I would like to know is what's going to happen to the assets and potential uses of the building. We can do that over the next 90 days and we can still make it. There's not a final decision made. This is a decision on sending a letter and that can come back to us. We can have it back to us in 30 days and no. We can have it back to us in 60 days and no. What's going to happen to the assets and, and what the plan would be. If it comes back that the plan's to wait another year, then we wait another year. I mean, we've, we've talked about this in a couple of different ways as far as what might happen. I know that you cannot guarantee that the homeowners are going to have a reduction in their policy. You've indicated that you think the businesses would have a reduction in their policy and I think that's an important aspect for us to consider in this. So I don't know, I don't think we've had a motion yet.
We have not had a motion. Is there a motion?
How we're going with that.
What is the motion of the Board at this time? Or what is, is there a motion to send a written notice or not send a written notice?
I make a motion not to send it. Give them time to get things together and decide what they want to do.
Okay. We have a motion to not rescind, not to send the written notice advising non-renewal. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. That motion fails three to two. Is there a motion to send written notice to the Jackson Park Volunteer Fire Department advising non-renewal of the contract for fire protection between the county and Jackson Park Fire Volunteer Fire Department as of June 30th, 2011?
I would make the motion, but I also would like to add to the motion that within the next, I don't know how much time you need, the work session, the May work session, that we will have additional information provided to us by staff and the Jackson Park Volunteer Fire Department is also welcome to provide information so that we can get a better handle on the situation and get more information in order to make a better informed decision.
Yeah, we have to make, I mean, this is the, I mean, the final decision will have to be made once we get that information on whether or not we're not going to contract.
That would be, that is
As I understand it, Mr. Smith said that we could rescind this notice at any time.
I want, I want to give enough time that staff and the Jackson Park, I want, I need to, sorry, I'm a visual learner. I need to see it in front of me. I need to be able to have some numbers in front of me and see exactly what we're looking at. We've talked about this kind of in a, this level and I need to have something that I can look at and I can see and compare both sides of the issue. So that's the only, that's what I would amend, that by the May work session, that we would have those, that information provided to us. And again, I would encourage the volunteer fire department to come and have everything in line so that we can get your information. This is the first time I've gotten to see you and I would rather have a better handle on it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
I'd like to ask also that we get some idea through that process from, from the Jackson Park Fire Department on what role they see themselves playing in the future as they, if they stay intact, maybe not have the equipment, but be in a reserve to fire department or how, as we look long-term with our fire services here in the county, what role they can even play as maintaining the organization and what role that could be with a reserve or, say, training role or, you know, any other things that we've been looking at long-term as far as our fire services are concerned.
We have a motion and second to send written notice advising non-renewal of the contract and receive further information by May the 2nd, I believe, is our work session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, two.
Thank you.
Next matter is G8, is the finance banking service contract, Mrs. Farrington.
We have banking service requests for proposals that went out to the local banks on February 1st, we had 15 days for them to get back with us with questions, and we responded with answers on February 24th, on, at 2:00 PM on March 11th, the request for proposals were due either via email or hard copy, and we received three RFP responses that, that were indicated on your summary page, that was additional information today. The financial institutions were asked to provide payment for their services in the form of average daily compensating balance or non-interest-bearing CD, and that they would, that the county would have to maintain with the institution, various other criteria was included in the RFP, asking the institution to respond whether they could or could not be able to provide the required services for the county, after thorough analysis and reference checks, it was determined that SunTrust Bank provided the lowest responsive bid for the county's banking services, we would like to choose the $4.2 million non-interest-bearing CD option offered by SunTrust Bank, with this option, we will not incur service charges as long as our transaction volumes do not fluctuate significantly from the annual transaction volumes that we provided to all the banks, our remaining balances will earn interest in the SunTrust interest checking accounts, or the balances can be transferred out of SunTrust and invested of the county, if there are any of our choices, our investment choices that we have, as stated earlier, the finance department would like to recommend SunTrust Bank as the county's financial institution for the next five fiscal years.
We got any questions for Mrs. Farrington?
Hey, just a comment, if I'm looking at this correctly, there were 17 financial institutions that you contacted about making, submitting an RFP?
Correct.
Okay, and of those 17, you got responses from three, however, one of them, what I read is did not provide requested information, and then was non-responsive on what we had actually asked for, so they, they offered something that we didn't ask for.
Correct.
So we're really down to two.
Yes.
One of which gave, and there was an or, not an and, there was an or, there were two choices that we were looking for, one of the financial institutions gave one of the options, and the financial institution that you're recommending gave both options?
Both options, correct.
Okay, but I just, I guess I want to make sure that everybody knows that you, you did make, I mean, there's a lot of local, most all of them are in Concord, Kannapolis, Harrisburg.
And the addresses provided, maybe they're, they're, you know, the Charlotte office, but the local, there was a local presence in Cabarrus County.
Yeah, that's my next comment, so, I mean, you did do, you did, you did attempt to get multiple responses, you just really only got two good responses.
Two that we were able to analyze, yes.
That you were able to analyze, okay.
A lot of the smaller banks will not be able to collateralize all of our, the funds that we have at Cabarrus County.
Yeah, when you do this, they are required, a bank, a financial institution is required to keep a certain amount of funds on hand, and that's called collateralizing our deposit, they're not required to keep everybody's money on hand 100%, but they have to keep a certain percentage, and so some of the smaller institutions would not have the ability to keep those monies on hand versus one like SunTrust that's large enough that they can handle that type of transaction.
This is correct.
Any other questions?
Can you tell I teach finance sometimes?
Do we have a motion to approve banking services contract award to SunTrust and authorize the county manager, Board of Commissioners, my chair, and finance staff to execute the contract or our bank documents on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to attorney review?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you for waiting us out. The next is G9, is the finance, is qualified school construction bonds, in regards to that, I'll call on Mrs. Dubois.
Good evening, back in September, we started the process for the qualified school construction bonds, and at that point in time, our criteria was that we were going to go with a private bank and place the debt there, and we would have a 0% interest with a five-year deferral of principal, we were unable to secure successfully a bank in that process, so we have switched the mechanism to a public offering and have gone back for the appropriate approval with a local government commission to do that, however, in the, in December and January, interest rates climbed extremely higher than we anticipated, and what we're looking at right now is having difficulties coming up with that 0% interest with a term that we find to be acceptable for the debt to fit into our budget structure, so what I'm here before you this evening is to request that you look at some other options of different interest rates, and most of those that are on this information that are provided to you for the March 17th evaluation is lower than the 1% interest rate, what I have added for further clarification is to show you what the total supplemental interest payment would be, which would start in year one, and that the principal payments would not start until year five, but on the second line of the supplemental information that was provided to you, there would be some interest earnings when we made the debt payments into the, with the trustee until the actual balloon payment is made, so there is some offsetting interest that would go against the debt payment over the term of the life, and what we're looking at in the first column, this is total projected earnings for the current rate on the second line, is approximately a 1.6% interest earnings on that, so when you look at that and then compare that to adding 1% interest to it versus adding 2% interest to it, that's where the starting base is, but based on the interest rates on March 17th, there's a cap in which you can actually earn as far as the interest is concerned of a 4.95%, I think that is correct, yes, 4.95%, so, this was to give you some illustration that if you were to go through and make a selection here, that there is some interest earnings that would offset some of the debt cost, and these are the options that are before you, our underwriter, Joe Nagel, is here in case there's any specific questions as far as more of the mechanisms are concerned with a debt instrument, or, and that you may have questions about that I can not possibly answer, so that's the information that I have before you this evening to see if you would be interested in leaving the 0% interest and moving into an option of having an interest rate in which the county would pay above what the federal government will pay for those interest payments.
Is there any questions for Mrs. Dubois at this time?
I do think it's an opportunity, it looks like the interest rate, we could get an interest rate of 1% or less, and I think the, I think the question before this board is, one, is are the projects necessary, and two, is if they're necessary, how do we fund them at the lowest rate possible, and I was out at the majority of these schools, I can't say that I was at every one of these schools, but I've been to the majority of these schools and taken a tour, and I tell you is that a lot of these things are, in my mind, certainly necessary, and I think that if we have the opportunity to make some of these changes, it will do nothing but help and prolong the life of the building, and a lot of these buildings are very old, and, you know, they've done a very good job, and I think they can do, continue to do a very good job, I think at this point in time, we ought to be seriously consider looking at selling these, if we could sell it and receive an interest rate of 1% or less, it would be my suggestion for this board. Is there any other discussion or comments?
Was that a motion that you made?
I would make a motion that we give staff the opportunity to sell these qualified school construction bonds with an interest rate of one, not to exceed 1%, so that if it could be at a quarter percent, half percent, three-quarters of percent, at 1%, my preference is, and I think from what we have and the information we've been provided, that it could be less than 1%, but I think that it should be not to exceed 1%.
And that would be the county's contribution toward it, the federal government would have their portion of the interest rate too.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure that y'all weren't thinking we were going to sell them for just 1%.
That's my motion, is that we move forward with the sale of these bonds, or sale of this, this, these, this debt for no more than 1% from the county's obligation.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Now, oddly enough, this is about, this is most, this is one thing I was looking for tonight, G10, Mrs. Ur, if you'll please come forward, this is the proclamation declaring March and April 2011 is One Book, One Community Month, and Saturday, April 9th is Tim O'Brien Day in Cabarrus County, can you tell us a little bit about One Book, One Community?
Sure, this is our third program that the libraries run, the One Book, One Community Program, the book that we've selected this year is called The Things They Carried by Tim O'Brien, and it's a series of short stories about the Vietnam War, and the purpose of the program is to get the entire community to talk about one book and generate conversation, I think we have really done that with this book, this book has generated far more conversation than we've had with any of the other books that we've selected, already, we've had a number of book discussion groups, the Old Courthouse Theater has done a program for veterans that was associated with this program we've done, programs for children, we have had a photography exhibit at the Carolina Mall, and it's now at the Kannapolis Library, we have another program tomorrow night at the Concord Senior Center, at the end of this month, which I guess is next week, we're going to have the Wall That Heals, which is a half-size replica of the Vietnam Memorial Wall at Frank Lisk Park, and then we're going to wrap everything up with a visit from the author, he's going to be at J.A. Robinson High School, at Roanoke Bearish Community College, and then he's going to do a presentation at the Hampton Inn.
Any questions for Mrs. Ur?
I've already read the book, I finished it this weekend.
I turned my copy in this weekend, and it's been just excellent, and I got, I don't know where it's appropriate even to add, bring this up at this point with this, I know we've got the proclamation here, and I don't know what's appropriate to put it in here or us to do something in April, or April meeting, I think probably do April meeting as well, but as we all know, Staff Sergeant Donald Shu, who was missing in action for the past 30, 40 years, his remains have been identified, and he's coming home for his final resting place here at the end of April, and I think it's inappropriate that both of these are coinciding with each other, and I don't know how that we do that, I don't know whether we want to put it in the proclamation for one, the community to read or not, but, you know, that...
I would think that it...
We welcome him.
I would like, it needs to be done separate.
I think so, that's what I'm...
Because I don't want it to detract from either event, because either event is very important.
And I'll, I was ready to that, but I can wait, but if you want me to, wait a few more moments, but what, the other thing, I was approached by the local president of the Vietnam Veterans Association this weekend, and pointed out, and I was not aware of it myself, but there's a small memorial that's in, beside the side entrance to the post office, that was for Sergeant Shu, and I don't know who owns it, I don't know who put it there, who was responsible for maintaining it, but it's fallen into some state of disrepair over the years, and I think it's only appropriate that we, and maybe by making this public announcement, somebody watching this that, who put that there, if it's family or whatever, or how do we go about, what does it need to have done, I don't know whether it's, you know, I know we were, counties are responsible for maintaining cemeteries that are, you know, have not, that have been either abandoned or, or not owned by a private organization or a family anymore, so I don't know whether we, we have any role to do as far as that's concerned, or who owns that, or...
I would imagine if it's at the post office, the federal government owns it, or...
Or whether, who, you know, they provided it for that.
Has interest, but we can certainly look into that.
Yeah, that's what I wondered about, plus by just raising awareness tonight, so we can come forward on that, with that memorial, so.
I went to a discussion recently that was led by Mr. Punch, or Mr. Mrs. Punch, as well as Mrs. Prather, and it was just, it was very good, and I would encourage people to read the book, it's a tough read in regards to the topic, but I'll tell you this, is after reading the book, it gives you more introspective reflection on what we individually carry, and I think that's, it's a very good book, but it, you know, it's, it's not a hard book, but it certainly is a hard topic at times, because I, I was just a mere child when that was going on, when the Vietnam War was going on, but it's amazing is, is what was going through and what was happening, but I would encourage everybody to read it, there's some great discussions, I hate that I missed Judge Horton speaking, but I do look forward to seeing Mr. McNeely, he's going to lead one group, and Linda Metz, who's a local author, it'll be interesting to get their perspective, so I think that's a good opportunity, and there, there's just some great things going on, and it's a good opportunity to read, and I will look forward to seeing how y'all are going to surpass this next year.
We're going on every other year.
But it was very good, I do think that, that this is something that we need to, as a, as a board, to seriously adopt this proclamation and get the word out, because it's, it's really good, it's bringing up a lot of discussion.
One thing I wanted to add is, I was assigned liaison to the library system, and Dana's been excellent in showing me the ins and outs of every branch of the library, taking her time to do that, and it's been, it's been an educational experience for myself to, to see the operations of all the libraries and what they all have going on, and there is a lot offered and a lot to take advantage of by the citizens of Cabarrus County, so thank you for your time and your help.
One additional thing, I know we've all been very talkative tonight, and on this particular topic too, to bring up another, and it's kind of a, a salary to it, reading this weekend, and, and I knew it was a large number, but we often, you know, it's, it's gotten to be such a commonplace thing to talk about the homeless and talk about those people that are, you know, wandering the streets about where they're at, what they're doing, where they come from, and I saw a stat this weekend that kind of sobered me that 40% of all the homeless people on the streets today are veterans, and, you know, what, that kind of, you know, you think about it, and think about the baggage that, and I've talked about this even with their PBH board, about what role PBH can play in helping with this, because we had a whole generation of folks that came back from Vietnam that were not, they didn't get the, you know, nobody knew what was happening when they come back, and they were emotionally detached, and, and the stuff that they carried, the things they carried, but we've got an equally large group of veterans now, that are coming back from Afghanistan and Iraq, that, that we've got to be prepared for, and I think that we've got to be there for this group coming back to help them through, and it was not something, you know, the ultimate thanks to them for what the sacrifices they've made, and also for these folks, a lot of them, like I say, 40% of the homeless are veterans, then you look at that, that was the event that caused that, may have very well caused the problems they're having now, so we've got to, I think, everybody, and it's not just, it's not necessarily the government, it's each of us individuals, we've got to reach out to those people we see that are, that are going through a rough time because of what they've been through.
Yeah.
I would say, I'll make a motion that we declare March and April 2001 as One Book, One Book, One Community Month, and Saturday, April 9th is Tim O'Brien Day in Cabarrus County, and that we encourage all the citizens of Cabarrus County to pick up a copy of The Things They Carried and join us as a community as we reflect upon these issues.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, and we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next matter we have is appointments, under H, first one is the Adult Care Home Community, do we have a motion to remove Mrs. Andrea King from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee's roster as requested?
So moved.
Motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, next is the County Agricultural Advisory Board, do we have a motion to reappoint Mr. Louis Suthur to the Cabarrus County Agricultural Advisory Board for a three-year term ending January 31st, 2014, as recommended by the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District Board, and a motion, a motion to appoint two applicants to the Cabarrus County Advisory Board for three-year terms ending January 31st, 2014, do we have those motions?
I'll second, yeah, who are the two?
Ah, I'm sorry, in far, in regards to Mr. Suthur, we have a motion for that, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, in regards to the applicants for the Agricultural Advisory Board?
I can point out and believe here that Ms. Porter is already on the Agricultural Advisory Board, I believe, isn't she?
I have, I don't have Mrs., I have Mr. Blackwelder, Mr. Bonds, and Mr. Sellers. Am I looking at some?
Oh, okay, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong page, I was looking at the one...
I was looking at the ones that are...
We have Mr. Blackwelder, Mr. Bonds, and Mr. Sellers, or Macklin Sellers.
So we're picking two of those three that are in there?
Two of those three.
Okay.
Since Mr. Suthur has already been reappointed.
That was where I was a little confused, too.
Correct. Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Blackwelder and Mr. Sellers to the Agriculture Advisory Board? Let me make sure I get the language right, for three-year terms ending January 31st, 2014.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next is the Cabarrus County Watershed Improvement Commission. Do we have a motion to reappoint Mr. Darrell Farr to the Watershed Improvement Commission for a six-year term ending February 15th, 2017? Do we have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next is the Council for Sustainable Local Economy. This is, there's the applications. These are a list of people that have applied, and the information that's provided to us after reviewing the applications, this is a recommendation from, from myself and also Commissioner Poole and Mr. Day for the initial members, or at least contacting those members, and see if they are willing to meet and able to meet with an alternate of Mr. Andrew Probst. We can either discuss each person individually, we can, however the board, this board would like to look at.
First, I would, I would like to ask, how was the process that was handled to review the applications?
Well, we got the applications, and we reviewed, and we discussed. You know, we looked at a couple of criteria, is the location of where they live and trying to get a broad spectrum. Also, their prior involvement in their commitment and being able to meet, not knowing how long that would take, or how long, how much time they would be able to meet, looking at their, you know, are they sole proprietors, are they small businesses? What is their function in different businesses? And those are many of the criteria that we were looking at in coming up with the list of the eighteen that we have before us. And to, there, there was a lot of gray, and it was not, these were not black and white, these were not easy decisions to make as to coming up with this list of eighteen.
Okay.
And to say that, that anyone that is not on this list is not as qualified, I'm not willing to sit here for that and say that.
So the chair, vice chair, and county manager?
Yes, sir. These are just recommendations, and this board can use those recommendations or change them however we see fit.
I certainly wish the other commissioners would have been involved from the beginning in the recommendation process. I, I was able to review the applications when I received the agenda package. I think there should have been more input from all five commissioners rather than chair, vice chair, county manager, seeing that one of those is not elected by the people.
Okay. And this is just a recommendation? You don't have to choose any one of them? So who would you like to choose?
I certainly understand that, but, you know, I know you guys started the recommendation process a lot sooner than whenever I've received all the applications, so.
Okay.
Just a comment.
Could we...
Who would you like to change or move out of the eighteen? Or how would you, what list would you like to do?
I'm not going to say there's a particular. It's just from the beginning, if there would have been more involvement from the other board members.
And, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I've kind of had a little bit, kind of thinking to myself about, looked at the names and not knowing some of their backgrounds, things like that, and I, you know, and having just seen them myself, wondered if it's possible just to, I mean, is it going to hurt the tableists for one month for us to technically, a chance for us to maybe look at the list, and then maybe if we've got some different ones to come up with that, and talk about those and come up with...
That's fine.
Yeah. So I maybe make that suggestion, that way the...
The only comment that I would make is that if there's not an objection to the ones that are on the list, then could we not go ahead and appoint them? I mean, this is, this is not the be-all, end-all. I can't remember what number we talked about to begin with, twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
So there's still some more slots available. These folks need to get working so that we are ready in May. We've already approved the contract to start working on this whole project, and that's, that would be my only comment, is that if there's no objection to anybody of these eighteen, nineteen, then could we not go ahead and approve them and discuss any three other additions or even change the number if twenty-one's not the right number over the course of the next month? I will tell you the reason that I recommend the, the alternate is that we were trying to find people who have experience in operating a business, and this is a recent college graduate, and I felt like that we need to look towards, now, we didn't need to focus as much on age, but on what they can contribute. I'm not, I happen to know this young man, you know, I think that he can benefit a lot from participating, and, you know, as the next year progresses, he can decide if this is really something that he was interested in and how much he could contribute. So, you know, you can delay it, I mean, obviously, that's a motion. If there's no problem with the first eighteen, then I would tend to say that we need to go ahead and get them working, and it'll take them a little bit of time to figure out if they can meet at the same time, and think about how hard it is for us to make sure we all can get to all the meetings that we have to go to, and make sure what their commitment is. We may have some of these that say, you know, now that I realize what the commitment's going to be, I can't commit to that, and then that's another one that we need to look at to feed into the system, so.
Well, I mean, I understand what you're saying, because I remember back when we reorganized the Planning and Zoning Commission back several years ago, you know, we got a ton of applications in for that. Commissioner Jubin, at that time, went through and kind of graded them, had some criteria, actually did a questionnaire they had to fill out in addition to the application, just to know what they, their philosophy was, so we can kind of find out what they were headed, where they were headed, and what they were wanting to do, and how they saw their role on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I don't have any problem, I mean, like I say, I know it's difficult for five people, because I remember too, weeding down, trying to weed down applicants for jobs from thirty people, when you have five people involved, and it's like trying to, trying to herd cats to get everybody into the same sheet of music. So I don't have a problem moving forward. I just would love to be able to, if we're going to, you know, go up to twenty-one, is be able to review and, for the rest of the applicants and appoint them next month, so.
Was this all the applications that came in, or did y'all just pick these nineteen out of the, what came in?
Nineteen out of the ones that came in.
What was the amount that came in? You know?
Well, we have them all.
Oh.
I want to say that thirty-five?
Oh, okay.
Thirty-five, thirty...
Yeah, they're all there, I think, aren't they?
Yeah.
I know that there's a couple that have come in, two or three that have come in just in the last week or so, that were quite late, so I just wanted to make sure that they had, you know, they may have a fair shake, it's getting on there as well, so.
I think it was thirty-five, thirty-six. Commissioner Burge, what is the pleasure of this board?
Let me approve the list.
We have a motion to approve the list.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And we can discuss at our work session in April, any further additions that we need to, that this board thinks is appropriate to put on there.
Clarification, terms?
What we did...
For those eighteen, as presented?
Yeah.
As recommended.
He made the motion. I presumed it was, there's, there's staggered terms on there for the viewing public that can't see it, if I can find it again. There's some one-year terms and some two-year terms, so.
Don't think there's any three-year terms. Yeah. Next we have is the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. We have a motion to reappoint Mitch, Mitchell Hegler to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2013.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I would call the board's attention to the reports that we have here. There's no action that needs to be taken. Is there any discussion from any liaison boards that we are on at this point in time?
If I could just update y'all, and so do and update the public as well, that there is, it is moving pretty quick, that PBH will be merging with Alamance-Caswell Area Behavioral Healthcare here in the next few months, and things are moving pretty quickly with that. What will be created, we had quite a lengthy discussion about it at our board meeting in PBH last week. What will be created will be a regional headquarters that will be over basically the, both catchment areas, Piedmont, PBH as well as Alamance-Caswell, and that corporate office will be located here. The new building is being built out on Kannapolis Parkway, wasn't planned that way when the new building was undertaken, but that will become the regional headquarters for PBH. And there will be district offices that will take on, that will remain, so for most consumers as well as providers, everything will appear, will remain the same for the organization. It's just that you will have, there'll be some changes at the top in the management structure, as well as the board governance structure. At this point in time, what we do is, if you may not be aware, I serve on the board at PBH, and then we also appoint three additional members, every, all five counties have four members each. If you did that with seven or eight counties, pretty soon you'd have a board as big as the legislature. So there are going to be some...
Hopefully it'll be more effective.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah. There are going to be some pretty detailed discussions coming up about some changes in the board governance structure at PBH and how that would work, and, you know, and nothing really has been, no really options have been put forth yet, but it's going to be more than likely, because you don't realize that we only contribute about two percent of PBH's overall budget at county level. And so it may be that, that we will back away from being, having some of the authority, appointment authority for, for PBH, and it may be rest more of the legislature, but we don't know. I mean, there's several different models that could emerge, but I'll keep you updated on that.
Okay. Is there any other comments from the board? I do want to call everybody's attention. There's a couple of things going on out at the Cabarrus Arena on April the fourteenth of this year. There is a UNCC College of Health and Human Sciences invites middle school students to examine your futures. It is an opportunity for young people to find out if a career in allied health is right for you. There'll be booths of School of Nursing, Department of Social Work, Department of Kinesiology, Department of Public Health Sciences, and that's from six to eight p.m. at the Cabarrus Arena, Gold Hall Number One. That is examine your futures, and it's for middle schoolers. I'm certain that high schoolers could also go, give you an opportunity about a career opportunity. I'd also like to call everybody's attention to Live It Up Cabarrus. That is a free event out at Frank Lisk Park at the barn from two to five on April the second. It is a festival with hands-on exhibits to demonstrate practical ways to have a more healthy and pleasurable life, such as backyard gardening, healthy cooking, composting, fitness, and leisure activities, a three-k race and fun run. Commissioner Cruz?
[laughing]
You did the run, the Santa scramble, right?
Right, I did. And yes, in the streets, you wonder why all those new potholes are in the street.
There's also the mini golf course competition and more. This is very important. Live It Up Cabarrus on April the second, two to five, at Frank Lisk Barn. Please, you don't have to register except for the race, but please take time to come out there and see what we are, what's being provided. With that, is there any other business to come before this board? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.